All right, we're right at seven o'clock, so I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Roll call, Ms. Weidner.
Dr. Campley?
Here.
Mr. Fountain?
Here.
Mr. Keenan?
Here.
Mr. Liggett?
Here.
Mr. McKinney?
Here.
Dr. Sadler?
Here.
Mr. Saylor?
Here.
Dr. Weston?
Here.
Ms. White?
Here. 1.03, 1.04, Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silent reflection.
Thank you so much. 1.05, reading of the PVSD mission statement. The mission of the Perkyman Valley School District is to cultivate an inclusive community of learners empowered to grow intellectually, socially, and emotionally. 1.06, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So move.
Motion, is there a second? Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. 1.07, special recognition will happen next week. I believe we are honoring Special Education Department as well as National Merit.
Unified sports.
Unified sports, unified sports, thank you so much. Brings us to 1.08, comments on any topic. The school board of directors affords the community an opportunity to comment on any topic for a duration of three minutes. You can state your name and municipality. I will let you know that we would like to keep the comments in the fashion and decorum of a business, workplace, or school environment. And with that, I open the floor. Okay. Seeing none?
Do you have a spreadsheet?
I don't have the spreadsheet up. Did anyone sign in that they would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to Section Two, Reports and Presentations. Student Liaison's Report, Mr. Lees and Mr. Rapp.
We hope everyone has enjoyed the weekend.
This upcoming weekend is homecoming, so this entire week we are getting ready through Spirit Week and a pep rally on Friday. So tickets for homecoming are available during lunch for anybody who would like to go.
PSATs will be this Wednesday, so if students are taking it, they will be expected to be at school at the normal time while everyone else has an async day. There will also be no Viking Zone on Friday due to the pep rally schedule.
There's been lots of athletic news since last meeting as fall sports begin to wrap up. Thank you. But we'd like to congratulate Alex Hall in particular on winning the individual pack golf championship and then on PV as a whole, which I'm sure will be touched on next week, for being declared a national banner unified champion school by the Special Olympics for fostering a culture of inclusion and respect.
Finally, we'd like to mention the homecoming football game this Friday, so please show up against Norris Town. Thank you.
Thank you both so much. 2.02, President's Report. I have nothing this evening for the report. 2.03, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Russell.
Thank you, Ms. White. And I have a few items for the board this evening and the public. So you heard Ms. White read the mission. We often look to the mission and some of those shared beliefs as I start my report. This year, I'd like to call your attention to the comprehensive plan that was completed last year, and it will extend through '28. The four overarching goals, we want to support students having access to STEM-related subjects. We continue to focus on growth for specialized groups such as English learners and special education students, those with an IEP. We are focused on Tier One instruction. That's the instruction that happens for everyone in the classroom setting. High-impact teaching strategies, and we want our students to feel safe and supported in their school settings, a sense of belonging, that they are a part of the school community. I circled these two because you'll hear a little bit more about both of these goals this evening. So, the agenda, let's talk a little bit about October. I mentioned last month that I would provide you with an update on the Southeast Youth Development Center, charter school attendance and how that has looked over past years. And I want to fill you in on conversations happening at North Montco. And then the Assistant Superintendent search to provide you an update on that. So October is National Principal Month. Thank you, we have some principals here this evening, a list of names of our principals. We appreciate the work that they do day in, day out, sometimes evening in, sometimes very early morning, sometimes around the clock. But their leadership is very much appreciated and goes a long way to supporting what happens for our students as well as our staff and parents, families. So congratulations, recognition well deserved. Thanks also to our PV custodians. October 2nd was Custodian Appreciation Day. And that saying rings true, we would be a mess without them. They do a lot of behind-the-scenes work, and we don't always think about that. They were called out very nicely on Facebook with several comments on the district's Facebook page. So their behind-the-scenes work is again something we appreciate very much. Kudos to them. Mr. Fabrizio is not here this evening, but he leads that team, and we appreciate his leadership of that team. So as we think about our shared beliefs or our shared values, we continue to focus on, out of our comprehensive plan, future readiness, supportive schools, and partnerships. We can talk a little bit more about supportive schools. When the school year starts, September is really dedicated to helping our students to realize the physical safety of a building and emergency responses. This month happens to be Fire Prevention Month, so there will be additional information provided to our students about fire prevention. And we have Perkyman Township to thank for that. They come into our elementary schools and they share in conversations with our students. It's also Bullying Prevention Month through October. Some of our schools are doing some different things to enhance some of what's already in place. Our students practice incident response drills through the month of September. As a district, we are obligated to hold a bus, or I'm sorry, a fire evacuation fire drill every month. We are also obligated to hold a lockdown within the first 90 days of the school year. And our students have moved through those drills following the "I love you guys" protocol. As we think about students in crisis or danger, all of our employees are mandated reporters. They receive training every five years at a minimum and report students to children and youth in the event there's an incident. We have the Safe2Say anonymous reporting system that many of our students use. You've seen data that indicates how many reports are received or submitted by those in our school district. Within our schools, we have positive behavioral interventions and support frameworks, elementary and middle school primarily, where we have instead focused on restorative practices at the high school along with the implementation of a youth aid panel. We want students to understand the poor choices they're making and to be able to work through correcting those choices through some of those processes. We also have school police officers in our schools. And our staff, as well as our students, our community, has really come to appreciate them and the feeling of safety that they bring with them in each of our buildings. There's also information in curriculum and instruction that our students receive directly about safety. So that month of September gets them going and acclimates them to the buildings and the physical safety associated with the building. We have a website, you can see the link at the bottom, Health and Wellness in Perkyman Valley, that highlights some of the things that we do and some resources that families can access if they need to. So let's transition. The Southeast Youth Development Center opened a year ago. They currently, I was up there last week for a visit, have 22 residents right now. They're looking for a total of anywhere from 40 to 48. They're still doing some construction on the dorm areas. Some of the students there are high school, are in high school, some are graduates of high school, some have earned their GED. Some are engaged in high school coursework. Some of those graduates are attending college online, community college. As I mentioned just a second ago, some of the construction is still ongoing. There's still some work on classrooms. They'd like to add a modular classroom so that they can create more learning space there. That would go outside the facility, somehow connect, there's some issues with permits, et cetera. Most of the classroom changes and updates they wanted have been completed. They still don't view the space as being enough for the learning that needs to happen and the different courses that are being offered. The dormitory areas, one side is completed while the other side is not, so there's still work happening there. Mr. Ganesh did work with leadership over there on helping them set up the Viking Genius Bar, modeled after what we do here in the high school, teaching the students some skills about how to repair technological devices such as Chromebooks. They use Chromebooks just as our students do. And they have some other technical career focus areas and equipment that will help students develop, again, skills that hopefully put them in a better position once they're released to be employable. So that's an update there. If we talk about charter school, a lot of data on this slide. If you look at the two bottom pictures, charter school enrollment over the years, and I just went back to 2019, been a little up and down, most recently went down a little bit versus our enrollment, which we know is declining. We've seen those data. You can see the actual raw data in the chart just above the graphs, almost front and center. I also shared with you just a sense of the tuition the district pays when students attend a charter school. From 2020, 2021, the 2021 school year, excuse me, I did not see 1920 on the PDE website, but the link is at the bottom. You can get these data, they're publicly accessible. Versus 2425, so there's a big difference in the tuition our students pay if they're general ed students versus special education students versus if we offer virtual experiences here, it's about $5,000 to do that. Now, that does not take into consideration the cost of the staff member. But to actually subscribe to the virtual coursework, it's between $5,000 and $6,000. So if there's additional information that you may be interested in, just let me know, follow up. But that gives you a sense of how the charter school enrollment has changed. We continue to work on trying to entice people to subscribe to PV Virtual here and take the coursework here instead of a virtual charter school. And we have the capacity to increase those numbers without necessarily driving up our costs. When students go to a charter school, we pay that tuition. So what conversations are happening at North Montco Technical Career Center? I just want to bring you into the fold. Mr. Fountain and Mr. McKinney and I attend the meetings once a month, the JOC meetings, they're the third Monday of the month. And the focus has really been on decreasing the waitlist for students to access programming at North Montco. And in particular, there's a focus on health sciences, which is upstairs on the second floor, and the idea that they would like to expand health sciences. There are programs within health sciences that are really in demand. There are jobs that are available for our students. What that means is some costs. They're working on those to figure out what would it cost to renovate upstairs and add another division of health sciences? It would be a third sort of area, if you will, and modernize, make things a little bit more progressive, they're pretty old. Biotech is up there, they've got to move biotech. So they're talking about moving it downstairs into an open space or moving it over to Montco, where they have space and have actually invited North Montco to take advantage of that for a small fee. But students would be exposed to other opportunities if they attended biotech over at Montgomery County Community College. The distance would be a little bit further for our students to drive, so that's a consideration. But some programs that are in demand and the waitlist for those programs are things that the tech school, the Career Center administration has really been focused on, giving students three choices instead of just two, to accommodate students getting into the Career Center because they really want that. Even if they change their program the following year, they're really focused diligently on decreasing that waitlist. So some information about what's happening at North Montco. In the event, there's an actual recommendation and something that will be presented more formally to the JOC. Mr. Fountain, Mr. McKinney and I will bring it back to you for discussion. There was a little mention of an addition on the part of one JOC member. It did not get much, um, no, very little traction, very little support. So I don't know that I see that in the near future. However, the renovation of the space to accommodate additional health sciences is a real possibility. So stay tuned, we'll keep you updated on that. And some additional data just connected to North Montco gives you a sense of how enrollments have changed over the years. They also had the Montgomery County Planning Commission conduct a study. And you can see here that North Montco, of the technical high schools in the area, has demonstrated an increase. So I enlarged that portion of the graph. North Montco has seen a nice increase in the enrollments and the students that are interested in attending, which is great. And the Assistant Superintendent search, so that chair's been empty for a little while, next to Dr. Sadler. The process and the timeline for replacing that position, the board approved this position as an Assistant Superintendent as opposed to what it was, which was an Assistant to the Superintendent. We've had both in the district in years past. There were 32 applications submitted for the position. The posting closed on October 3rd. There was a paper screening that was conducted. Round one interviews occur this week, and we will interview about 11 candidates. And round two occur next week. We will have a committee for that, that's traditional in terms of the approach. That committee provides feedback, and then the superintendent presents a recommendation to the board. The goal is to have that recommendation to you at the November 3rd work session. That ends my report. Thank you.
I have a question. So last Thursday was an off day for the students?
Yes.
And there has been some questions and wonderings about how communications was put out as some extracurricular activities were allowed to participate in their extracurricular activities and some others were not. I just wanted to get some clarity to that because it's been procedure that when the school's closed, like winter break, Christmas break, Easter break, what have you, extracurricular activities still happen.
So that's not exactly true, accurate. There are some holidays where there are no practices. So last week on Yom Kippur, and this will come up in the calendar conversation with education updates, we can talk about it now or we can wait until then.
Can we, can we talk about it during the education updates, would you mind?
If Mr. Saylor's okay with that.
Since this was the superintendent's report and that actually wasn't part of your report, do you have, does anybody have any comments or questions about the superintendent's report?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about it now. I thought it was going to come up in the superintendent's report. The calendar is talking about a future calendar. I'm talking about the calendar that we currently are in.
Yeah. The only thing I added, Mr. Saylor, because this conversation was brought to my attention, was I did add two questions with the calendar conversation, that being one of them. And happy to entertain conversation with the board about that.
So yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out, schools are, schools have been closed. This was not a full school closure, district office was still open.
Right.
Schools have been closed fully before, and extracurricular activities still happen. I know that because my son is in some extracurricular sports where those things happen while schools are closed. Trying to understand why some extracurricular activities were told they couldn't happen while at the same time, on the same day, others were told they could happen.
So the only extracurricular activity connected to athletics and marching band that was afforded an exception was cross-country because of an invitational that had been scheduled in August. So we didn't have control of that. What we did have control over, we opted to cancel. So there were no contests for the district and there were no practices for athletic teams or for marching band. So there were, the intention was not to have anything on that day, to honor the holiday, which is viewed really as the most significant holiday in the Jewish community. There are other holidays where we don't have anything. And I think I shared that list with the board this weekend. So Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's Day, July 4th, Easter. These dates do not have any practices. So this was an effort to really just extend respect to the community that celebrates Yom Kippur and follow that practice.
When did this start happening? Because I'll give you an example, my first two years on the board, the school was off for Yom Kippur, but practices still happened.
Yeah.
When did, when did we start doing that? Last year?
For Christmas, Thanksgiving, it's been traditional that there hasn't been practice.
That's not true.
Christmas Day?
Yeah.
According to Mr. Felty, there is no practice on Christmas Day.
We don't have teams that travel during Christmas?
Day after, day before, but not Christmas Day.
Got it.
So Mr. Felty-
But they're away from home?
Not to my knowledge, over Christmas. I am not aware of that, no.
You're not aware of any sport program being away during the Christmas break?
Over Christmas, the day? No, I am not. No, I am not. If that's happening, it would be helpful to know that. What, in conversation with Mr. Felty, he specified the holidays where there are absolutely no practices. And they were, they were provided to our board in a list, and I just, I just shared them. So, the effort was, and I'll, full transparency, I thought the league was moving in the same direction. They did not. They were in different places.
You mean PIA double A?
No, I mean PAC, the PAC League.
Oh, R-PAC, yeah.
Yeah. So, again, it was an effort to honor the holiday. We, as a district, have to be ready to commit to that. And if we're not, then we keep it optional. If we are, then it would fall in line with those other holidays where there isn't practice. And there are times in conversation, I learned with, with Mr. Felty, that the day after Christmas, there's a contest. The day after Thanksgiving, there's a contest. Not on the days, and there's no practice. So, that was the thinking. But again, you represent the community, so if we need to have a conversation and rethink that, I invite us to do that.
Why didn't that happen first? Like, who made the decision? Because district office was still open, the school businesses were still open, Christmas is closed, it's a federal holiday. The Congress of the United States has declared that Christmas is a, is a holiday. And so, we're closed closed. District office isn't open. Mail doesn't happen. It's a closed closed day.
Yeah.
Right? Yom Kippur, I happen to be someone who celebrates Yom Kippur, is a holiday that we've had off, but teams still were allowed to practice.
They were.
PIA double A has made a conscious effort that when Yom Kippur happens on, on a, on a game day, that they move the game.
Right.
But that hasn't happened with practices. And our local school districts, Methak and Salerton, Springfield, did not cancel their extracurricular activities.
They did not?
We did.
Some of them had them as optional.
Optionals for the people who might have been at shul, not optional for the school to have.
Correct.
Irony was pointed out in having a diverse and inclusive acknowledgement on a Jewish holiday seemed a little bit-
Right.
-like a double standard. And so, I think based on that experience, in my memory, we made a conscious effort to try to be more proactive in avoiding students needing to make a choice between a cultural or a religious acknowledgement and their obligation to a sport or extracurricular activity. That's how my memory serves.
I mean, that, that was certainly the effort.
That was the flavor of what you took away.
Yeah, that was the flavor, to advance the mission.
But how come the people involved didn't know about that? Let's say, the beginning of the year?
Who? Who didn't?
Players, coaches?
They knew it. Mr. Felty knew it in August. We've had conversations for some time now. Now, his coaches don't love it. They want to have practice. They would probably prefer optional, but these conversations didn't happen last week for the first time. So, so if a delineating factor is whether or not district office is open, that's an interesting way to look at it. We can consider that. Or maybe we just go through the list of holidays that are recognized on the calendar and decide, do we want to change and sway from those that currently do not hold practices or contests or keep it as it is? And move Yom Kippur to be like Rosh Hashanah, where practices are optional, but there's no contests.
And the challenge with that is that honestly, because they fall on a different time every year, sometimes the conflict is, is not always a practice. Sometimes the conflict could be, you know, a Friday night football game or a Saturday competition or-
I, you know, we're, we're-
The only thing I-
We're a public school, right? We're a public school. We're not Barak Academy or PJP. We're a public school, and we've added calendar days to recognize the diversity and the cultural activities in our community, which is phenomenal. But when we start canceling activities, I, I would think that would be something that the board should talk about in public and really, really seem to understand. Because this didn't happen the first two years I was on the board. It, it just didn't happen. And we've added more activities. So, I guess we're not going to have extracurricular activities during Eid. We're not going to have them during other ones as well. Like, what's the delineate, why Yom Kippur is so special over Rosh Hashanah or Eid?
Because we, because I have received anecdotal feedback from individuals that are Jewish more than I've received anecdotal feedback about Diwali or Eid al Fatihr. And the board is now recognizing those holidays in the calendar. Again, this was an effort to take the same-
What anecdotal information?
Well, we didn't-
There are, there are six points that are very important to Judaism. They're Yiscah. Yiscah happens six times a year. I don't see that on here. I see one of them on here. Where are the other five?
I don't know, but you could-
Those are the five that I'm going to miss work because I'm going to be in shul. I don't understand. It seems like we, someone made a decision to cancel one activity over the other, and something changed, but the board didn't have an opportunity, nor the students have an opportunity to talk about it. And now, we're saying Yom Kippur is a little bit more important than Eid. I don't necessarily think that's necessarily true. For the Jewish student, yes, but for the Muslim student, probably no. Or for the Christian student, Easter is a more important holiday. And it should be up to them whether they participate or not. But we did a total shutdown at our, for our students.
That's right, we did.
And there was no conversation about it.
So, so there has been conversation about what to, we didn't used to celebrate the Jewish holidays years ago.
Yom Kippur has been on the calendar for a while.
It's been on for several years, you're right. But there was a time when we didn't necessarily celebrate both. It was one or the other. And, and again, you've prompted the conversation. Let's have the conversation. And if the board-
But it's too late for the seniors who missed an opportunity to get themselves prepared for one of their most important activities of the year. The day before, their practice was canceled.
Yeah. It, it wasn't canceled the day before, Mr. Saylor.
No, no. The game, the game was on Friday, the practice is on Thursday. So, the practice before the game was canceled. It might have been, it might have been canceled a long time ago.
Exactly.
But it still is the day before their game.
But that's a clarification in the, in the, in the way that that is sounding when you say it that way. And again, we don't have to cancel things. This was an effort to recognize and honor a holiday in a way that's similar to some other holidays. Where we draw the line? More conversation. We have to talk about that. Because you're right, should we, should we be able to hold practice on Thanksgiving, on Christmas, on New Year's Day? Right now, we don't. But should we? Because you know what? The day after Christmas, there can be a wrestling match, there can be a basketball game, there can be a swim meet. So, it's a hard decision. And if the board doesn't feel, and I, I don't disagree with you, this year, we were the only ones in the PAC that didn't offer optional practices. That's on me. I thought they were moving in that direction. So, if the board is comfortable, we'll go back to that. It's optional. No contests, but optional practices.
But I appreciate that you said that, but what I don't, what I don't understand is you're saying if the board's okay with that, the board was never given the option to do what happened. It's not like this was presented to the board and we decided, we're going to make a vote, we're going to cancel activity. So, when you say if the board wants to, the board never got the opportunity to, to use its voice, to be heard. It just happened without the board's input. But what happens is, you know who gets blamed for it? The board.
Well, you can tell them Dr. Russell did it.
But they don't, but they don't care.
But, but Mr. Saylor, you haven't weighed in on Thanksgiving, and we used to play football on Thanksgiving. We used to have a Thanksgiving Day football game. We don't have practices anymore.
I go to a Thanksgiving football game.
You didn't weigh in on that.
I go every year.
Okay, but you didn't weigh in on that or Christmas. Again, there is, there is an approach in place. My effort was to, again, just simply to extend respect for a holiday and follow that same approach for some of-
Thanksgiving happens to be a holiday that's recognized by the government, so is Christmas. I, I am just saying, we, we decided to make a delineation this year, or maybe it happened last year.
No, this year.
This, oh, this year. And board members didn't know about that delineation.
It almost seems like we're creating a separate category of holiday here. There's like the regular holiday, and then there's this super holiday. I would, like, correct me if I want, for Columbus slash Indigenous Peoples' Day, if, if teams wanted to have practice then would-
We're not off the school that day.
I, I'm reading off the, the list that was provided here of holidays that, Sarah, but that, that is one. I tend to, could, could, can't, could these practices not be held? Yeah, absolutely, I think. And does the district have the right to do that? Absolutely it does. I think there does need to be at least some sort of communication as far as what these holidays are anticipated to be. I think, I agree that it should be, you know, a board approval on that. And I, I'm fully in, in favor of respecting holidays of, of every culture that we, that we do. I would suggest that if, if we decide that a practice couldn't be held because it's optional, or we have this, you know, the holiday that has these extra restrictions on it, that should be universal throughout the district at that point. I would think that, you know, like, the, in the Superintendent's letter, it said that for Yom Kippur, district offices would be open and school offices would be open. If we're going to say that it's a matter of respect, I think the entire district should be paying that respect at that time.
You know, I think that could be a delineating factor. Mr. Saylor alluded to the same thing. So, that could be one of the delineators, if there, if there are delineators.
And that's why I think there may be a level of, of people getting upset about this because on one hand, we, we, you know, celebrate the holiday. By the way, office staff will be in, in all the buildings. Okay, so, the, it obviously isn't, you know, there's an ability for the district to still have some activity during that time. And so, that's when people begin to scratch their head and wonder, why is it this can happen and this can't? I understand about the cross-country and that's, you know, it being pre-scheduled. And I think the fact that the rest of the PAC follows one, one standard as far as that is, not that we can't be outliers, but I, I think it shows that there are ways to respect the holidays and allow for optional activities to still happen. If you were to tell me that there is going to be zero security on the property, that, you know, the offices are shut down, then, then it makes sense that the answer to can we have an optional practice would be no. But if these things are happening, it almost seems, and don't take this the wrong way, target it at whatever that ask is, so that instead of delivering a yes, which I would hope is almost a default answer for when students want to or there are teams want to have an activity. If there's a way that we can support them, I would hope our default answer is yes and not, let's say no and insert this, this reasoning. When, I just think we just need to think more carefully about it. And if we need to designate days as absolute no practice, no activity days, then perhaps we need to add that asterix onto some of these holidays so that the board and the public know what is to be expected. Because I think some of this is also a surprise in that, what do you mean we can't have an optional practice? How does that? So, I think that's where some of this discontent comes from.
Just jumping. So, I, I just want to start with thank you for, I know it didn't turn out, there's, there's some, some pushback, and I can understand the reasoning for some of the pushback, but thank you for the intent of what you did in trying to give that day as a day where there was no activities. I, I understand and can appreciate your rationale and your reasoning for that. So, I want to start with that because I think there's a lot of attacking going on, and I don't think that there was any malice involved in that. You were really just trying to consider the population of students that we have here at PV. You know, yes, we talk about like the Muslim population and we have, you know, different groups that, that we are starting, like Diwali, we, we are giving that day off. But when we look at a percentage of students who celebrate different holidays, the Jewish population is growing, and there are more students impacted. So, when we're talking about how many students are impacted, that we need to have to make that decision as to, do I go to my practice or do I attend that game or do I celebrate with my family for a holiday? And, and they have to go, I can appreciate wanting to think about that percentage of students that would be impacted. So, I almost want to start with that. Next, I think, I do agree though to a point that if, if it's a national holiday and the building and everything is closed, I think that's kind of like the no-brainer piece, like obviously everything is shut down. And I do think it gets a little tricky as to when do you start delineating. I think if the PAC as a whole has come to an agreement, then maybe that's another outlier that we need to consider as well. But I think a big piece of this is, what's done is done, we can't go back. So, to sit here and belabor it and to drill questions over and over again, why did it happen? Why did, it happens. Decisions get made, sometimes mistakes are made. Dr. Russell has fully owned up to the fact that she made the decision and she took accountability for it. End of story. So, I think moving forward, we can have a conversation in more detail with our calendar as far as which dates in particular. I do think the federal holiday ones are no brainers. I think if there's any that the PAC already delineates as saying that as a PAC, they're going to all agree on, these will not be practice days, we could consider those. But I think this is a conversation that we do not need to continue to belabor. We can talk about it with calendar. There's no need to continue to sling mud and to be frustrated. You took accountability, you had good intent, and I thank you for that.
Does anyone have anything else to add? Okay. We will move on to Section 2.04 Solicitors Report, Mr. Subers.
I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Subers. Board and District Committee Reports, 2.05. Looking ahead, Board and District Committee Report. On Board and District Committees, rather, we will have policy next week at 6:00 PM prior to the weaning next week. Act 48 is coming up at the end of the month. Assessment Committee is on the 15th. Education of the Whole and Wellness, both will take place on October 16th. That is a new date, same times, but new date. The time for the Wellness Committee, I think, needs to be adjusted possibly. Is it 3:45? I just want to confirm.
I think we were, we were alternating, so I believe it is 3:45 and that's accurate.
That's not a problem.
Okay.
Perfect. Safety and Operations will take place on the 23rd, and then there were, there are the various other individual outside committees. Does anyone have anything to add for Board and District Committee Reports? Okay, seeing none. We move on to Section 3 Consent Agenda. The consent agenda is being built. It is as presented. Moving on to Section 4 Education, Mr. McKinney.
Good evening. Dr. Handerhan.
Well, we're going to tag-team this one. He's, he's going to stay right there for a minute and happy to do so, I think.
You got a little nervous there for a second.
So, three items here on the Education Updates this month. So, let me go back because I moved very quickly. So, Gifted Services Review, I want to come back to that, something you approved last spring. We'll come back to the calendar. In addition to the conversation we just had, and I took some summary points away, I want to review those with you and then ask you about an Act 80 Day versus half-days. And then, Dr. Handerhan is going to talk a little bit about the steel standards. That's big in our world this year in terms of curriculum. So, last spring, you approved a Gifted Services Review to be conducted- So, last spring, you approved a Gifted Services Review to be conducted by MCIU, and that wasn't completed this summer, as we had originally hoped. We've delayed that, we've uploaded some of the paperwork and provided them with some of the documentation, we are preparing to schedule some focus conversations with different stakeholder groups, and we would like that to happen this fall. There is now a cost to the review. We do have the funds available in grants, but I would like to bring this to you as an action item next week, so that we can move through this Gifted Services Review or audit. I think it's really important for the district. So you'll see a little bit more about that in the memo. I would like to add it to the agenda for next week, unless there are questions about that. Okay, so, let's jump to the calendar. So, good conversation. Number two, we've already considered, I appreciate the input, and so what it sounds like, in terms of the notes that I took, if district is shut down, then activities are shut down. And that is the case on Thanksgiving, and Christmas, and New Year's Day. Easter's a Sunday, so that's a little bit different, just adds another layer. Secondly, if it's a federal holiday, so a lot of the community is shut down, is that a consideration? And lastly, if the PAC makes a decision not to hold contests, I don't know that it would ever decide what to do with practices, but I can talk more with Mr. Felty. Those can be some considerations. Is there anything else that we should consider moving forward with respect to that question as we think about the calendar? Anything else left over in your thinking? The other question I want to ask you about next year's calendar, this will be discussed at the Education Committee of the Whole with more detail, but before we get there, I'd like to propose eliminating the three half-days that we've held for professional learning in January, February, and March, and instead, add a third, Act 80 Day. It's proposed as a possibility on March 10th in 2027, and that also is Eid al-Fitr. So it falls on the holiday, it would provide principals and the curriculum and instruction team an opportunity in a full day to provide the professional learning that sometimes happens over those three half-days, which I have come to know are challenging for our parents, our families, and also for our staff, teaching all day and then diving into some professional learning. So, I just want you to think about that, and know that that will be presented unless there's a lot of conversation about not doing that as a consideration in the calendar, but we'll bring it formally and go over some of the details at the Education Committee of the Whole this month, but those are two things that I did want to talk about tonight. So I really appreciate the conversation on the holidays, and if you have any comments on the Act 80 Day, feel free to share.
So, I'm personally in favor of eliminating the three half-days. I would have liked to do that this year, actually. I know that we've talked about it on and off over the last several years, so I think that would be great. I think with regards to having the Act 80 Day on Eid, it may be helpful to maybe have the folks that celebrate that holiday weigh in as to actually how that would impact them. You know, in the conversation about the district office being open, but the schools being closed and activities being canceled, one of the things that I find, I'm trying to find the right word, troublesome, is that for those of us that celebrate a religious holiday on a day that is not federally recognized, a couple different things happen. First is the absolute ignorance about everyone else around you not even understanding why you're off, and so in conversations that we've had over my tenure on the board, about education around multicultural holidays, I think that is something that needs to continue to happen, obviously with the lack of awareness globally with regards to different religious holidays. I think that that is something that would do everybody a whole lot of good. The second part about that is having to take a personal day off of work, for example, and actually use vacation time in order to celebrate your holiday, and that's not something that everybody, unless you have that circumstance, that has to experience. And so, my rationale for the practices, although optional sounds like it's a compromise, it really, to me, forces students that are affected by a double responsibility to have to choose between one or the other, and then they are not offered the same opportunity for the practice or event or game. So, if they are not penalized, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're not missing out. So they're almost forced to miss the practice, I guess, is my reasoning. And things happen, at practices, at rehearsals, decisions get made, you know, marching band is certainly an example that you could draw on, content happens, teaching happens during practices. And so, if there's an optional practice on a conflicting calendar date, when it could easily be rescheduled or moved, I don't think that the practice cannot happen, why can't it just be rescheduled? I don't understand why it has to be one or the other, I guess, is my question.
I have a question. So, again, and I said this a couple of years ago, I'm all for having these holidays, but you're starting to add too much, you take too many days off. So we're now talking about March 10th Eid, not having a day, right? Having no practices and no activities, right?
No, no, that wouldn't, no, that wouldn't be the case, it's an in-service day. So, it would be an Act 80 Day which is in service.
But let's say, two years from now, it's a different day, because they have a different calendar, they have a very similar calendar to the Jewish calendar, so it's not going to be an act service, an Act 80 Day. That is when state championships are happening for basketball. Are we going to go to our basketball teams and say, can't practice, can't play?
No, Mr. Saylor, I'm not proposing that. It really, the list of holidays where that...
But this is where these conversations are leading, right?
No, well, or they're not, because we're having this conversation, which puts a halt to that.
So we're going to have some caveats, then?
What do you mean by caveats?
We're talking about not having a practice plan on Yom Kippur, right? We haven't even brought up Ramadan, where we have students who literally can't drink during the basketball game, that they might be playing in, or a track, or marching band, they can't have any liquids, right?
Yeah. So the...
What was your reason for Yom Kippur?
My, in my mind, the reasoning, Yom Kippur is a fasting holiday, as you know, so you're not eating or drinking all day, and then to have a practice in the evening, it seems to me, it's really no different than Ramadan. I would argue that that, here's where I see the issue.
So for the month of Ramadan, we should cancel all sports?
I didn't say that, and that's not what you heard, because I didn't say it. What I'm saying is, that the problem, as it continues to be, in my view, is that we have to have these conversations locally, because as it goes up the chain of command, there is no acknowledgement of any diversity in this country, and that's a big weight.
That's why the football team wasn't allowed to practice. That makes sense now.
No, no, no.
It should make sense, because when we have to make decisions locally for what's best for our community, it would be a whole hell of a lot easier if we were able to rely on the same mechanisms that are in place for our community, that the whole nation could rely on those safety nets. So if you're inferring that the football team somehow lost because they weren't able to practice the day before, that's an interesting inference, I don't know statistically if that's accurate.
I think we need lots more data, but there have been times when they haven't had practice, and they've done okay.
They've still won, without the one practice.
No, no, I'm just, I'm inferring that we made a decision to tell one activity group that because some kids can't drink water or eat for 27 and a half hours, that they shouldn't be allowed to prepare, because last I learned, we're supposed to be defending public education, and I'm on a school board for a public school.
And are you here, Mr. Saylor, to defend public education? Because we're all wondering that, too.
Pretty much everybody agrees.
Public school, a parochial school.
I'm pretty sure I said, why are we still badgering this topic? She took accountability, we are already talking about not doing what just happened in the future.
Laura brought it back up and said we should do it. That's what she just did. That's why it came up again. We didn't bring it up again. Laura did.
She's talking about acknowledging.
My name is Ms. White at this table, Mr. Keenan.
Excuse me?
Number one. Number two, as I, and listen, I'm just taking that page from Mr. Saylor, he wants to make sure they're really formal here at this table. I'm pointing out that if the conversation Dr. Russell is looking to have is direction for next year's calendar, it is my opinion, as one person of nine, that we should continue the practice to not have students have to make a choice on certain calendar days. That is my opinion. I am asking the table to weigh in. Mr. Saylor does not feel like that's appropriate. You clearly agree with him. Does anyone else have anything else to add?
Oh, sorry, I didn't express my opinion, but I would like to.
But you were just reiterating what I was saying.
No, no, I was having a, you didn't probably quite hear me, I was just talking...
Oh, I'm so sorry.
To Ms., Mrs. Campley.
Dr. Campley.
Dr. Campley. And about why we had closed the topic, and then, it had been reopened by you.
Well, the topic was closed during the superintendent's report, and it was not actually part of the superintendent's report. The conversation should have happened right now, so I'd like to have the conversation now.
Dr. Campley just asked why we were still talking about it.
That's why. Mr. Liggett, how do you feel about the matter? You did weigh in a little bit. Do you feel as though we should go back to the optional practices?
I believe that optional practices are appropriate under some circumstances. Now, like I said earlier about that maybe we're creating two different classes of holidays here, perhaps that's a direction that we need to look at, whether it be Yom Kippur, Rosh Hashanah, Eid. It's the communication of it, and who is making that decisions. Now, I tend to agree that that is a, or should be, a board decision on that, and this, we now know that this is the kind of thing that we need to look at. I think in previous years, we haven't even considered that, just because of how things have happened. I think in this particular circumstance, in this holiday, yeah, my personal opinion, I would have leaned towards a yes, making it optional. Do I understand your point about that those that are going to take the option to not participate because they have a conviction? Yeah, I get that that happens. I extend that feeling of respecting the conviction of these people to all of our people in the district. So that's why, when I make the point of saying the district offices are open, the school offices are open, they can be just as much affected by that holiday, and are they then to take their personal day, as you were saying? If these, if we're going to create the category of a, we need to come up with a good name for it, a full shutdown holiday, whether it be connected to a religious holiday that we're trying to pay respect to, or a national holiday that is secular in nature, such as Thanksgiving, 4th of July, although obviously, it's 4th of July, I think we need to have that direction, we need to have that discussion, and I think we can do it in a way that is reasonable, that we can figure out, like, in looking back this one week in the past, I'm not going to say that we would have won the football game because there's a practice. Obviously, one practice shouldn't be the difference between winning and losing, but I think that we can respect the people that are celebrating the holiday while figuring out ways of saying to the rest of the group, a yes, a, we're here for you as well. So, excuse me if I'm trying to take it down a notch, but I think the communication, we can figure this out.
Well, and you offered a very valid point, and that's what I was trying to reiterate, is that because the district office operates on more of a corporate schedule, they're open, right? There's no students in the building, so you're open on certain holidays that the buildings are closed.
And that's where it becomes difficult to explain to people.
And the reason for that, though, is the lack of acknowledgement, which was my point. So you feel as though, so who's the arbiter of that decision, though, I guess, other than the nine of us? Where, how do we get that, how do we make that, how do we make that choice?
Well, that's why I said it's about the communication and getting the calendar, and if we need to add an asterisk to a date on a holiday, that this is, let's say, full shutdown, or, you know, the property is closed, let's say, that might be a way to explain it in a short time. I think that needs to be in there. Now, personally, I came from a high school where Thanksgiving Day was the biggest football game of the year. That was the rivalry thing. We loved Thanksgiving football. Having a practice or something the day after Thanksgiving, that would be interfering with travel plans and everybody's Black Fri-, well, Black Friday is no longer a thing anymore, but you understand what I'm saying. Regardless, just because it's a date, everybody's going to celebrate it in a different way. In my local tradition, that was a football day. So, we can figure this out. Let's continue the conversation.
Dr. Russell, are you looking to have the calendar approved and have a decision made around the guidelines associated with the calendar at a certain amount of time?
So what I'd like to do is bring it to the Education Committee of the Whole with, again, more detail, and I really appreciate Mr. Liggett's suggestion of putting an asterisk on the calendar, so it's very clear to the readers, and the board approves the calendar, so you're approving that language that would appear there about when activities, school activities, would be held or not. And if we're comfortable with that criterion of if district offices and schools are closed, we're shut down, therefore no activities, then that can be explained on the calendar, if that feels right to the board. Otherwise, we talked about federal holidays, and I'm trying to think about whether or not district office would be open sometimes on those days or not, and then the PAC. And right now, the PAC is somewhat divided on whether or not the practices were optional or just held, as usual, on Yom Kippur, so.
And that's where I think...
Maybe the criterion around district being shut down completely is the one that we recognize and use as the indicator about activities, and that's all activities. So, Mr. Saylor, I don't want you to think that there were athletic teams outside of those few cross-country runners that were allowed to hold practice, not the best word. Everything, all extracurriculars were intended to be shut down.
I think going to the PAC, too, and just continuing to have those conversations, and bringing up the continual conversation of equity, and some of the concerns around, you know, what you're feeling, and what many people who celebrate those holidays that are not as recognized, and what those children are feeling by not being able to, you know, just be able to celebrate without having to make a choice, because it's not really a choice, they're going to be home with their families, and then they're missing out on being part of the team. What that feels like, and hopefully maybe the PAC on some of those larger holidays, especially ones where there are fasting, because that becomes a health component, may, you know, I think if the PAC can become unified on that decision, it really becomes a different situation. It's not just one school, it's, everybody is combining. I think that's going to be the key, is just having those conversations with the PAC.
So to answer your question, Ms. White, if I may, you asked when, I would like the board to consider approving, it would be November or December, depending upon how the Education Committee of the Whole conversation goes, and we really look at the details of the calendar, when students start school, when they get out of school. November would be great, December is typical, and parents really appreciate it sooner rather than later.
And, you know, again, I just want to reiterate that I think the conversation is necessary, I don't think that there, I think the thing that I find so frustrating is that there's an insinuation of some sort of egregious intent, or some sort of a covert, or, it just, it comes across as accusatory and really negative, rather than with best intentions in mind, and I think that that's why I feel so frustrated over the matter, because it's not a matter of not having the conversation, or, you know, not having a compromise or an understanding, but unless there are steps taken towards acknowledgement of different holidays, even on the smallest scale, there never will be change made in a larger way. And I think that, you know, like you said, about going back to the PAC, until those things, you know, obviously, there's national games on, during every holiday, other than, including Christmas Day and New Year's Day. So it's a matter of placing importance in one thing or another. Dr. Weston, or Mr. McKinney, do you have anything to weigh in?
Dr. Sadler.
I guess the only thing that I'm thinking...
I guess the only thing that I'm thinking about is whenever it comes to or intend to be inclusive and to recognize or observe, we always wind up in some way or another, whether intentionally, unintentionally, by mistake, being exclusive. So, like, I would hate to see a student be told, okay, it's an optional thing, but you observe, so, like, let's take Ramadan. You fasten your prayer, but you're going to miss the activity that you may love or whatever. Or the employee who says, okay, you have to take a holiday, you know? Like, that seems punitive to me. So I think we have to come up with a way that appreciates and observes all of the things in a way that allows for people to be their authentic selves and get away from this, what's more important, or what's, you know? And I think if we're looking at, like, athletics and things like that, like, yeah, you miss a practice, you miss a practice in the sense of a day, like, so I don't think that's a big deal or whatever. You have a whole season. So, you know, I guess that's one of the things that, and when we look at, like, federal holidays, like, I don't know, I think, yeah, just because the federal government says, you know, businesses are set to be closed, whether it's Christmas or Thanksgiving, I think we have to come up with something that's, again, a little more reasonable outside of that. So, and that's just what I think.
Yeah, I really have nothing to add. I'm sorry.
I think the conversation was enlightening, for sure. I think we should be cognizant of holidays, and I think it's a hard balance, I think, to try to determine when to make something an optional practice day and a non-optional practice day, and all still, and still be honoring people's individual religious beliefs. So I think conversation needs to continue to be had in reference to this. I know some people are very passionate about it, but as a school board, we need to come to a real consensus on what's best for the students in our community.
Does anyone have anything else to add, Mr. Patton?
Since you didn't call me, I will go ahead.
Sincerely apologize, Mr. Patton.
Thank you very much. I actually agree with what Mr. Liggett had said. I think that it was very eloquently put. And I do think that it is something that we need to look at, the idea that they are optional, because I do think that in many cases, if you look at the number of students who may be involved in a particular activity, and you look at the number of them regardless of what that activity might be, or regardless of what religious or cultural convictions they may have, you also then have to say, well, what about the rest of the team? In other words, if there's three, four, five, six, seven people on the team that do feel the need, either culturally or religiously, to miss a practice, okay. But the rest of the team, then, is also then being penalized in some regard because they're not able to practice, and they are not, and they're not observing that particular holiday. So I agree with the idea that we need to look at it as being an optional type of a thing, but, and also the idea of having an asterisk on those particular days that would be all-inclusive, that that would just be completely shut down. I don't know how many there might be, and we'd have to discuss that anyway. But I do think that you made a very, very good point, and I do think that's the route that I would say I'd be most comfortable with.
I guess the thing that makes me wonder is, how is that equitable? And I guess if we're not taking into consideration marginalized and folks who always get the short end of the stick, you're telling a Muslim kid, you have to take off, you know, of no fault of their own, because they observe, I just find that that's hard, and that's being exclusive. That's not allowing the kid to have the ability to be included, so.
You're talking about Ramadan?
Ramadan, or any of the days that they observe.
So at what point do we create a data point? Like, how many Jewish students do we need to have? Because a lot of schools in Pennsylvania have got rid of Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah, especially like in central PA, where schools literally have, like, two kids. I don't know how many Jewish kids we have at Perkium Valley School District, and I know it's not a large number, right? What number, what percentage point do we say, hey, you know, we now have X percentage point of this religion in the school district, so we're going to add these to the calendar? That's how you would functionally, in a professional setting, decide how we add something to the calendar. The data proves that the population in our community, we have enough to add an event to the calendar, right? But, you know, we don't have every single religious holiday on a calendar right now.
We don't have every single Christian holiday on a calendar.
Correct. We are picking and choosing.
You want me to start going through and adding days?
Yeah.
We can start doing that.
You and I have had this conversation before. We are picking and choosing, for some reason, what we put on that calendar and what we don't. I've always advocated for having none of it on the calendar at all. And that's just my personal opinion as a religious person of the Jewish faith. I am okay not having a school calendar that has the holidays. And if I choose to go to services that day, that's fine. You have to also understand that every religion right now in the United States, the amount of people that attend services has dwindled, unfortunately. I say it's unfortunate. We don't, we don't think about what happens Friday night when Shabbat starts and the Sabbath starts from Friday to Saturday. We don't think about that. The NFL doesn't think about people going to church on Sunday. The NBA has decided to add Christmas as a day to have, like, seven games, right? We've fallen away from religious fever in this country, in my personal opinion, to a detriment to the society. But I don't think at a public school, we should be picking and choosing what religious holidays we celebrate, and then what activities our students are allowed to do on those days. I think it's very honorable to do what Sandy Koufax did. He didn't tell the Dodgers, you can't play. He said he couldn't play. Hakeem Olajuwon played in the playoffs during Ramadan. He didn't tell the Rockets, we should move to schedule our games. He said, I won't eat, nor will I drink, and I'll still get triple-doubles. And he did, right? That's an honorable thing. We're taking a different approach and saying everyone has to be culturally invested into someone else's religion, while at the same time, to Rowan's point and to others who have reached out to me, there are a lot of activities that are, a lot of religious holidays that are not on our calendar, because we have a lot of different types of people in our school district. We have Ukrainian Orthodox. They have holidays that are not on the calendar. As Rowan has suggested, there are Christian and Catholic holidays that are not on that calendar. There are Hindu and Hindu holidays that are not on our calendar. I would love to be in a world where we could honor and recognize everyone, but when you try to honor and recognize everyone, what you're really doing is saying to a lot of other people, we forgot about you.
I think you make a good point, Mr. Saylor, but the question I have is, not everybody is Hakeem Olajuwon or Sandy Koufax. So your personal convictions are what you go by, in a sense. But again, and I don't have the answer for you about the data point, like, what number meets a threshold of we get the holiday or not, you know? So, but again, I think, yeah, we have to come to a better understanding of, you know, what our district looks like and how we actually, again, recognize, observe, and, you know, meet people's obligations. So that's what I'll end with.
I think if we, you know, we have some time until the Education Committee of the whole, and I don't know if, to some of the points that have been made, if we want to change things up a little bit. In terms of the holidays that are celebrated, that would certainly be the time to have the conversation. For now, I think what we'll do is propose, based on that criterion of the district being shut down, where all things are shut down based on the calendar as we know it, and have practiced it or implemented it in recent years, anyway. Opportunities for more conversation at the Education Committee of the whole.
Thank you, Dr. Russell. Does anyone have any other last words before we move on to STEEL standards?
Are you all warmed up, Dr. Hanran?
I can't wait.
All right, I think we're good now, right? Good evening, everybody. Just wanted to talk a little bit about the STEEL standards, which are to be implemented this school year, and just give you some updates as well as to the curriculum writing process regarding the STEEL standards. So just a little background, STEEL standards are the Pennsylvania version of the NGSS, National Standards, which came out around 2013, I believe it was. And so Pennsylvania has given school districts time to implement these. They are to be implemented this school year. The standards, how they are different, just, they incorporate three different aspects. So they're known as three-dimensional standards. They have the Science and Engineering Practices, which I'll discuss in a little bit, cross-cutting concepts, and then also the disciplinary core ideas. What we teach has not changed a whole heck of a lot. What has changed is how we go about teaching it. That's been the major shift, and it's more geared around trying to get science outside of the four walls of the classroom, outside of the textbook, so that students can start to understand that science occurs every day all around them. So here are the Science and Engineering Practices. They're known as the SEPs. It's what students do in science class. So there's eight of these practices, and they are reoccurring K through 12. So as students go through or progress through their schooling, they'll get used to and accustomed to these different practices. And this is, this correlates with how students are to be assessed as well. So the standard, again, incorporates these three parts. The SEP is always, like, tied to the first part of the standard. So you might see that students are to be developing and, is it developing and creating models, right? So that's a little bit of a shift. So no longer are they just, like, creating a bridge or a model of a bridge, they're developing it over time. The other aspect that is new is the cross-cutting concepts, and these are how students are supposed to think about science. And again, they're reoccurring K through 12. And when students encounter phenomena, they are to look for patterns, cause-and-effect relationships. It helps them to understand the world around them. Finally, the disciplinary core ideas, the DCIs. This is the content knowledge that teachers have been teaching students, you know, forever, really, right? So this has not changed a whole heck of a lot. What STELS now does incorporate, though, STELS stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Environmental Literacy, and Sustainability. And so the technology and engineering standards, as well as the environmental literacy and sustainability are new as well. And so they are being tied in all across K through 12. This is the big shift, though. So it's phenomena-based learning. So like, the traditional model of, like, science class might be, I do, we do, you do, where it's lecture-based a lot of times, right? And then there's one day dedicated to a lab. Really, STELS advocates for encountering phenomena and driven by student questioning, where they might not quite be able to, like, understand inertia yet, they might not have been taught about Newton's laws, and, like, seeing a phenomenon just like this that is, like, occurring all around, right? Noticing that, and then through their learning, at the end, they'd be able to explain the, you know, what inertia is and how that relates to Newton's laws. So that is the major shift right here, is just phenomena incorporated into semi-regularly into classes. Where we are at, at PV, with curriculum updates, just earlier this year, presented Earth Systems and Biology, which are now STELS-aligned, as is Chemistry, Physics, and then also Middle School Tech Ed. This year, we've been working with teachers K through eight in Science and also Explorations as well. We'll be working with them, too, is the hope. So, any questions? All right. Well, thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Hanran.
Thank you, Dr. Russell and Dr. Hanran, for the educational updates. Moving on to 4.02, approval of assessment schedules. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns?
I do have one quick question. I know that it was something that we had previously discussed. Some of the assessments, as they are scheduled for the '25, '26 school year, have some redundancy because there are different touchpoints. And I know that some of the conversation that was had was around my question as when students show a certain amount of advanced proficiency, whether or not there is really a need to retest or have those students spend time in their school day testing when they could be more focused on additional content or enrichment? I'm wondering if you foresee opportunities to make some revisions this year, based on the MCIU data that comes? Or how you foresee handling the constant assessment of students that are at a certain threshold when the feedback? Like, what are we doing with the data that comes back that shows that there are students that are doing the things that they need to be doing? Or understanding the way that they need to be understanding?
I think, and Dr. Klun is here, and he's led a lot of the conversations here, I think that that comment was brought up in some of the previous conversations, and there was a decision to make some adjustments to the schedule so that the testing wouldn't necessarily continue for our highest achievers who have tested out and demonstrated that they are at a proficient or distinguished, advanced performance level. I'm not sure what the MCIU reference was, I'm sorry.
So I guess, in terms of making, maybe redirecting a section of, I guess, I'm not completely understanding what the MCIU study is really going to give us in terms of information. But I guess, I guess the redundancy of continually testing a certain population of students when they could actually be focusing their attention on content-driven time, as opposed to just regurgitating the same test scores over and over again.
I'll simply add to the conversation that at the high school with our, with our star reading, if a student meets or exceeds the proficiency, they're not going to retest those students. As far as benchmarks go, those benchmarks continue to move forward in measuring content, so you would want students to continue taking the, at least two data points with the benchmarks. And we are continually being very reflective about testing time. You probably noticed that we took off the Standards Mastery for I Ready, off of the, you know, just looking at feedback and wanting to make sure that we were going to be as focused and, I think, very strategic in using that data. And we are having conversations about the actual data that we're getting back, not just with the principals, but also at the teacher level, in their collaborative teams, that they're looking at that data. I mean, we're already processing the new data that came in from our fall data window.
And I guess that's really kind of my bigger, you know, from an umbrella point of view, that's really my bigger point, is that other than October and February, where the data meetings happen and shifts happen in terms of supports or, you know, that are happening in each building, there isn't a month that goes by without some fashion of testing. And so I just want, I guess I'm looking for continued acknowledgement that the data that's being received from these tests is actually data that we're really using to drive instruction in a good way, as opposed to just, like I said, regurgitating the same result, test result data back.
Agreed. I can confirm that and say that we're being very strategic in terms of using that data. And the data is constantly being looked at, not just at our data meetings. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Klun. And the comment I'll add to your reference to MCIU, we may get feedback through this Gifted Services Review, presuming the board approves it next week, that will help us to know what adjustments might make sense.
Okay, that's.
Okay, so for 4.02, can we move that to consent? Not hearing any objections. We shall move that to consent. 4.03, a request to approval of field trips. An action is requested tonight. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? Second.
So motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Okay, 4.04, we have a motion to approve- Okay, 4.04, we have a motion to approve an out of the district senior. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Is this something we need to take action on tonight?
Actually, that would be very helpful. Otherwise, it should say ratify. If the board is comfortable taking action on this item, it would be helpful to do so tonight.
Sorry, do you recommend this?
Yes, I do.
Second.
So motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Mr. Keenan had his question. It was answered. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, 4.05, motion to approve proposed allocations for federal program funding in titles three and four. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Not hearing any. We shall move that to consent. 4.06, approval of professional development resources, Marzano Resources to provide. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Not hearing any. We shall move that to consent. 4.07, approval of international trips, Portugal and Spain. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Not hearing any. We shall move that to consent. And 4.08 is the enrollment report. That ends my section. Ms. White?
Thank you, Mr. McKinney. Mr. Leggett, Section 5 Business.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. We have three topics tonight, and we'll just get right into it. So the first item, we have to have additional work done for our fire alarm system. If you recall, we applied for and received approval through the state for about a $1.3 million program to replace our fire alarm systems in five of our seven buildings. All of our buildings except for the South and High School, which our High School is a much larger project. That was approved. We went through initial drawing design. All of it was scoped out. We went out there, and CM3 is doing the work. We approved that. However, the AHJ, which is a new term I've learned, which is the Authority Having Jurisdiction, which is our local townships, came back in. They gave us temporary approval for all of our fire alarms that were put in this summer. However, they are requesting that and recommending that we need to move forward with additional horn and strobe lighting materials in our mechanical rooms. It's not required. However, the AHJ is recommending that we do that. So we really don't have a choice in that. So to do that in those buildings that we've done and prepare, now that we know we need to do this for the second phase, which is Schwenksville and Skipback as well, will be $45,989. We are getting that done and purchased through Omnia Contract Platform, which is acceptable. And the funding will be through the Capital Reserve and the General Fund. We recommend moving forward, and it is Board Agenda Item 5.02 for consideration. Any questions on that?
I'm sorry, which jurisdiction in particular?
So these particular ones were from Evergreen and East, which are Perkeomen Township, and then West, which was Lower Frederick. That's where we had the fire alarm panels installed this year, this summer, in anticipation of the same authority for Skipback and Schwenksville as well.
Do they have the same building inspector?
That I don't know.
No, they don't. But it seems like you're saying that there was not a building code provision cited for these?
This, I'll have to look into the exact building code. Mr. Fabrizio is not here tonight, and we will get you that information.
And what are you asking for exactly? I mean, are we just adding these? These are just adds?
These are adding strobe lights in the mechanical rooms as being required at a cost of $45,989 through Omnia Platform. Again, it was thoroughly reviewed when the plans were devised. And mechanical rooms, they were not required. But the Authority Having Jurisdiction is pretty much saying we can't get final approval until we put those in.
And Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, then, what this does is create a single standard for the entire district?
That's what we're working towards, yes.
So that each building is as safe as the other?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Again, Mr. Keenan and I will work to make sure that we get that information for the full board for the weekend. Next item is our annual snow removal contractor. Mr. Fabrizio does a pretty good job. He reached out to three different contractors, and we are recommending Strauss Landscaping. They responded with the best rates. And this is Board Agenda Item 5.03, as a reference, when we have a very busy winter, so to speak, for 23, 24, the winter of, that cost us about $39,000. We do budget about $45,000 in the budget for this. Last year, we only spent $11,000 because we did not have the need for that. So that's the roll of the dice, that we do that. We try to prepare ourselves. This will cover South, Skipback, and Schwenksville, and we cover all of the other properties internally. Any questions on that?
It just came up a little. Sorry to bring this up, but just to mention it to you, that there's, maybe it happens year after year after year, people express concerns with the materials that are being spread to keep the snow down, the brine in particular, and sometimes brine can be contaminated, allegedly. Is that something that you look into in the contract and talk to the contractor about, about exactly what they're putting down to melt the ice?
Yeah, I'll look into that. I think pretty much that we use salt. That's approved. We don't typically brine our.
It would be certainly nice and keep it simple. But I think, anyway, that was the point that I was just looking to make.
Absolutely. But I will definitely confirm that. Okay, moving on to 5.04. We had discussion at the Safety and Operations Committee about two particular areas, one at South and one at Middle School East. The one at South is to continue to make a loop for traffic purposes around the building. If you can see at the map, that little black line there, that actually connects those two roads. But we do need some engineering services. So as part of that conversation at the Safety and Operations Committee, it was recommended to move forward with that. We are engaging, we are recommending to engage Gilmore and Associates for the South Loop, and also for Middle School East, which is specific to the emergency road. That emergency road where that red line is, that was placed there when the building was built, when we have pictures of Dr. Russell in the back in the little water retention basin way back when. That road was initially meant as an emergency road. There has been some concern that we still don't have an emergency road at East itself. If something should happen on the small little bridge going over to it, we will have essentially cut ourselves off there, so with no access. So we are re-engaging again Gilmore to go forward with looking at, from an engineering standpoint, what it would take for us to actually see, to make that an emergency road. We had to have some discussion in regards to maybe making that a bus exit, but that's not possible at that point in time because of the lay of the land at the top of the hill there, at the end of the red line, wouldn't make it possible or safe for buses to get out that way in any kind of a continuous bus loop. So we're strictly getting into what it would take for that to be maintained as an emergency building. There are areas of concern that we need engineering-style services to help get us in the right frame of mind when we actually attack that particular road. There are two different costs. The South is $6,600. The Gilmore portion of that is $7,900. So we are recommending, moving forward, with hiring Gilmore for a total cost not to exceed $14,500 as professional services, to get us some additional information for South and for Middle School East, and we are recommending that.
Mr. Weaver, I just have one follow-up question with regards to the deliverable for both of these. Once we get this information, will then be able to go out and request proposals to have the work done?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just for the record, I wanted to point that out.
Is South intended to be two-way?
You know, at this point in time, we haven't had that discussion about the two-way. It's definitely one-way, and that would impact the drop-off and pickup. But it's not two-way at this point in time. The engineering study may be able to tell us, hey, for what we're doing there and the fact that we have to actually have some foundation for a road, that might make it make more sense.
Yeah, you have to put in some retaining wall. I'm just thinking it through, and, you know, lay the foundation anyway. I mean, probably wouldn't be that much more to do the two-way, and it would be so much better. And also, whether I'm here or not, or whatever, or in those meetings, don't forget some major traffic calming devices in that area in the new construction, because you'll have a loop.
Excellent comments. Thank you. I know Chief Miller is already talking about safety as a priority as well. Okay, any other questions on that? If not, thank you very much.
Wow, Jim. Good job.
Don't look at her closely.
Jim. Anyway, moving right along. Covered in Mr. Weaver's report was items number 5.02, 3, 4, which I would suggest that we move those all to the consent agenda. Item 5.05 is to approve the purchase of additional security cameras. Without objection, we can move that to the consent agenda. 5.06, to approval of new bathroom partitions for Middle School East. And 5.07, to replace doors at Middle School East. Without objection, we'll move both those items to the consent agenda. And then lastly, we had the approval of the 2025, 2026 Special Education Contracts and Cost of Services. Actually, there's more. I didn't scroll. Move that to consent without objection. 5.09 is part of the consent agenda currently. And there's a report for the grants and donations. There is a donation for the memorial bench at Middle School West for Mr. Jason Cook. So I'm pleased to have that on the report. And that ends my section.
Great job, Mr. Leggett. Thank you so much. Section 6, Payment of Bills, Mr. Keenan.
Yes, 6.01 and 6.02 will be on October 13th. That ends my section.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan. Dr. Weston, Professional Personnel, Section 7.
Thank you, Ms. White. Items 7.01 through 7.08 are all in consent, and that concludes Section 7.
Section 8, Support Personnel, Dr. Campley.
8.01 through 8.05 are all in consent. That ends my section.
Thank you, Dr. Campley. Moving along to Section 9, Governance. I will take Governance this month. 9.01, the first reading on policies as presented. Any comments or questions? Okay. 9.02 is a motion to accept a board member resignation for Dr. Sadler. So the motion is to request to approve the resignation of Dr. Trina Sadler as School Board Director, effective tomorrow, October 7, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? A motion and a second. Any comments or questions? I will lead off by saying, Dr. Sadler, thank you sincerely for stepping up to serve these last two years on the school board. I know it is not, by any stretch of the imagination, an easy task with the time, effort, and emotional toll that it takes, but I also understand the need to put your personal responsibilities first sometimes, and I appreciate your willingness and your self-awareness to do that. Do you have anything that you'd like to share with the community?
I would just like to say to the community, it has been an honor to serve on the school board here in Perkeomen Valley. I think during my time here, I've had the opportunity to really work collaboratively with our school board members, students, and families, and staff, and our community. And I'm really proud of what we've accomplished as a school board. And just because I'm not on the school board doesn't mean that I'm not here to support you all in any way that I can. I'm sure I will be in the background, supporting from afar. We've, I've really grown to really appreciate each and every one of you on the school board. Even though we may have differences of opinion, I feel like we can disagree to disagree, but know that our common goal is to do what's best for our students and families in our Perkeomen Valley School District. So like I said, it's been a pleasure, very mixed emotions right now, but you are all going to always be in my thoughts and my prayers. And if you ever need anything, please feel free to reach out to me. I'm a text, a phone call, an email away, and I appreciate you all so much.
Dr. Sadler, thank you so much. Sincerely.
Dr. Sadler, you forgot the part we discussed about I want to sincerely thank Todd McKinney for his outstanding support.
Dr. Russell, did you have anything to add?
I would just extend my sincere thanks again, and appreciate your service, the insights that you've offered. And I wish you well, and enjoy those extra few hours a week you get back.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Should I vote no? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Sadler. That brings us to 9.03, which is the discussion item to discuss the replacement of the seat left vacant by Dr. Sadler. When I met with Dr. Russell at our agenda planning meeting, we did an overview of past procedure that the board has taken with regards to a vacancy, along with what is required by policy. And I know that Dr. Russell shared some information in this week's memo, and so to help guide the discussion, Dr. Russell, if you could just set the stage for the table, and then we can maybe branch off for the discussion from there.
And I'll invite Mr. Subers to weigh in, but the board really has some latitude when it replaces a board member that's resigned its position, her position. In the past, what we've done is we've posted the position, the vacancy, and invited applications along with a resume. And in this particular case, Ms. White and I proposed three questions that would come in with the application. They have been used in the past. So the documents that were shared with you were ones that exist in the library or that Ms. Widener and I found from 2012, a 2014, a 2017, or a 2018, replacing, replacement of a vacancy, a board vacancy. Once those applications are received, and the board would need to think about the timeline to leave that application process open, you have 30 days to fill a vacancy. So the goal would be for you to take some action on November 3 at this point. But that evening or during another public meeting, you would, most likely in the past anyway, interview the candidates that express interest. Now, a question that I'm hearing from some around the table is whether or not we would interview those candidates in the open. So in the past, in my experience, there's been a table set up where the podium exists. The candidates are seated there, and they take turns answering the same question, and they take turns starting to answer those questions, so that I don't always get to go first. When the second question is asked, Ms. White gets to go first, and then Dr. Weston gets to go first when the third question is asked. You get the idea. There have been some concerns raised to me about that not, that happening in public, excuse me, and wondering, should we be interviewing candidates individually, so that the answers on the part of some don't influence the answers on the part of others? So that's the question. Another concern or question that was raised to me is whether or not the board president asks all the questions, or board members can take a turn and each ask a question. Lastly, can the board have the opportunity to probe more deeply when a candidate answers a question, to learn more about a particular topic or the way that they think? So these are some of the things that have been brought to my attention. But larger scale, you have a lot of latitude in. But larger scale, you have a lot of latitude in how you approach this process. And whether or not you interview candidates, again, it's a public meeting, so there is a question about, and I had this conversation with a board member, we can ask a candidate to leave. I'd like Mr. Subers to weigh in on this. They don't have to leave. Things have to happen in public.
Isn't the meeting recorded? It's broadcasted?
Yeah, the meeting is recorded, so.
So there's no way to get a, they're going to be outside watching on YouTube?
Oh, right. You're right. They could log it. You're absolutely right. They could log in.
That was one of the issues that I brought up about.
Okay.
When that was done in 17 and 18, we didn't broadcast our meetings.
That's right. Yeah.
We broadcast our meetings now. So if you ask someone to step out.
So, right. Yeah, they could, they could tap in.
I'm going to go watch it.
So that's a question for you as a board to think about, then. Do you want to just sort of follow the traditional process that we followed here, or do you want to think about something else? So in some of the documents that were shared with you, you have the current Board Operating Guideline, which is analogous to an administrative regulation for policy 004, and it lays out a procedure with very specific interview questions. There is an older version of that, which I referred to as a proposed draft. You've also received that, and it's labeled as such, the current 004 BOG 1, the proposed 004 BOG 1. And that proposed document, that version, is just an effort to be more clear and more comprehensive with the details of the process. And the interview questions that have been proposed to you or shared with you are ones that Ms. White and I drafted from some of the questions asked before and some of the other things that we're thinking about today, real time. So that's what you need to weigh in on, as well as that process. But in the end, I want to emphasize, you have 30 days to fill the position.
Can I just start with the process? So as far as, I mean, considering we're on Zoom, I think it's kind of here nor there. If they're sitting in a row, I think as long as you're alternating who goes first, I think that's fine. I really don't have an opinion as to whether or not Ms. White answered, asks all the questions or we take turns. I don't think that matters. The questions are all the same. The big one that I do take issue with is the, do we ask follow-up questions? When I think to interviews that I have taken part of, interview panels, when we're doing interview panels with a rubric, I don't feel that it is fair to candidates to ask follow-up questions, because then you take away the validity of the question, because not everybody is getting that same follow-up question. So therefore, your rubric and the way that you're rating it is going to be different, because person number one, you may have asked them no follow-up questions, but by the time you get to person number three, you've now thought of a follow-up question, and you've drilled that person more than the first two. I also feel that there are instances where this board can be a little tough with their firing of questions, and I don't think that any candidate deserves to have that line of target. I think we go with a question, we ask the question, they answer it, and everybody gets treated the same way, and we all grade them on the rubric the same. It keeps uniformity, and it keeps fairness and validity.
Who created this rubric? When?
Last week.
May I ask a question about the rubric?
Yeah, it was just, it was just an attempt to create a rubric that would have a little bit more detail.
It's a first pass.
Yeah, it was just a first pass. It's just a draft, I mean, to.
How long did it take you to create this rubric? I'm just curious.
I don't know. 10 minutes?
Okay.
Yeah, not long.
How would you envision the rubric?
We use rubrics a lot, yeah.
Here's, as a, not a professional educator, I don't use a rubric every day. And having looked at the rubric that was provided there, basically having a question and then a scoring standard, and I would be filling it out as I'm going along there, what happens to the rubric when I'm done?
So the conversation that, and I don't want to speak for, just collectively, the conversation that I had had with Dr. Russell, which was sort of along the lines of Dr. Campley's comment, was making sure that every single person answering the question would have the same experience and opportunity to answer a specific question and then be graded. So for those of you around the table that have not taken part in the process that Mr. Moran has absolutely perfected with regards to interviews in the district, this is a very similar approach to that, where there is a rubric associated with, and then those rubrics then get turned in.
That would be my.
They can also be, they could be turned in and destroyed, or they could be turned in, and I suppose, I don't know where we would hold them or why we would hold them, but what would you like to happen with them?
Well, here's the thing. If we create a rubric and we fill it out, we're creating a written record then of the deliberation that we would have internally.
That's right.
By doing this.
That's right. Of where your voting would fall.
Correct. And then, especially if you're keeping the rubrics, that is subject to a write-to-know request.
Okay.
Which means now the deliberation of the individual board members would be out there. If we're required to, well, first of all, you really can't require us to follow the rubric as a board member. I could have the rubric in front of me and not utilize it, because as a board member, it's my choice in what standards and criteria I'm going to use, whether it's presented to me in a rubric or not.
But ultimately, you'd have to vote on.
Exactly.
Right.
And ultimately, that's the final responsibility of this. It is the board that by a majority vote.
Right.
Has that elevates a candidate to the board.
Right.
The law is very, very scarce on what it is that is required, like you were saying.
We could vote on someone today.
A lot of it is on us. I'm sorry?
We could vote on someone today.
We could, in theory.
Correct.
Because we have a 30-day deadline to do it, and there just needs to be a majority vote of the board. So all this is very, it's internal. This is how we're deciding. We're tying our own hands with these, or we're guiding ourselves, if you want to look at it in a positive outlook.
That was the intention, was not hand-tying. It was more of a tool of guidance. Without knowing how many resumes or how much interest will actually be received, it could be two people, and then you, a rubric would maybe, you would think would maybe be unnecessary. It could be six people. It could be eight people. So in other words, what is the mechanism of which you're keeping track, and how will it be most fair and uniform in analyzing the questions person to person?
And while fair and uniform, I understand that, that sounds very good and everything. This is a candidate coming up and offering themselves to become a member of the board. While it is an interview, it is not a job interview. It is a function where a person, in lieu of an election, because typically, we are elected by the people. So this person is offering themselves up. There are now, with one vacancy, there would be eight people at maximum, deciding for the rest of the electorate and the district who will be elevated up to the board. In that sense, I, as a board member, would want the freedom to be able to ask that person anything that I want. And because each person is different. If, for example, and I'm not picking on you, if Mr. Saylor was not on the board and he were to sit here for an interview, and I have a bunch of, we have a bunch of pre.
I wouldn't get five votes. Don't worry about it.
What's that?
I wouldn't get the five votes.
You know, let's just live in a fantasy world where you might. You get up there. I think it would be incumbent on me, knowing history, the past, and him, that I would ask him about book challenges, that I would ask him about how policy is made. I think that would be a very valid question.
You would want to ask me all the reasons why I'm right. I got it.
Absolutely. Now, you're right, but if somebody else was up there, that question may not make any sense, because why should I ask them about their book challenge? They didn't make one. Let's say Mr. Saylor comes up with finally the winning argument for his book challenge.
Oh, the state of Pennsylvania agreed with me two years later.
Okay, so with regards to the.
So that needs, the follow-up questions become important. And that's where I think we need to, in coming up with this policy, keep it as loose as possible and keep it as fair as possible.
I respectfully disagree about keeping it loose. And the reason for that, Mr. Liggett, is because if everyone is asking questions that are ping-ponging with every, that are suited for the particular candidate, in my view, it targets a particular candidate to sway opinion one way or the other with regards to that candidate, as opposed to asking.
That's what deliberation is. It is trying to sway.
So this isn't a deliberation, it's an interview.
And actually, I would like to solicit a question. These are board operating guidelines, right?
Correct.
We're not bound to follow the board operating guidelines either. We could go outside the guidelines. We just have to cast a vote. There's no one that can prevent us in a public meeting from asking someone a question. Whether they want to respond to the question is totally up to the individual, right? But a board operating guideline is a guideline. It's not a policy. It's not saying, this is the only thing that you're going to be allowed to ask, and this is the only person that you're going to be able to ask that. My issue with this whole process, just to be transparent, is, A, I don't think the superintendent should be drafting board operating guidelines, because they're board operating guidelines. B, and I've said this before with all rubrics, 1 to 4 is a bad, bad number. It's not a big enough way station to differentiate between 3 and 4, or 2 and 4. So 1 to 4 is bad. But most importantly, we're guided by the Constitution of Pennsylvania and the school code, which says, we're, people have to apply. We can come with a mechanism for them to apply. We have 30 days to vote, but a board guideline can't prevent us from asking questions during a process.
So I just want to kind of chime in here. So first of all, 1 to 4 is a very standard.
I know.
It's a very standard and statistically relevant way of going about a rubric, especially in interview situations. It's known to be extremely valid and accurate. Second.
But in most rubrics.
I'm still talking.
No, I'm asking a question.
No, 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 no. I don't want a follow-up question right now. I want to be able to finish my thought process, then you can ask a question.
Sure.
Thank you. So the next thing I want to keep in mind is that when these people are coming up and they're having an opportunity to volunteer their time to be on the board, we're going, I think if we're asking for their resumes and their information, their applications ahead of time, if we need to, we'll have background information at our disposal ahead of time. We'll be able to vote, even after we take all of our notes, in the back of our mind, we're all going to have somebody that we think is going to be the person, and that's who we're going to vote for. The rubric is a guideline, because if we have eight people in front of us, it's important to kind of keep track of what each person is saying. To go off on tangents of 50,000 different questions, it muddies the waters, it makes things challenging, and this is not a typical campaign. This is looking for an individual who's willing to come in and take the place for two years, who has answered the questions to show that they are a candidate who understands what the position is for, who's able to answer the questions. If there is something that you have on here, we can add a question. What is your feelings about books? If that is what you want. And then every single candidate can answer a question about the books, and we can decide that we want that question on here ahead of time. But to sit here and throw questions out willy-nilly at individuals, because quite frankly, we know that there are certain individuals on this board who will sit here and make it a firing squad, like a person is under oath with a spotlight on them.
All right, Dr. Campley.
And that is not fair.
Dr. Campley, so, here's the theory. So first of all.
Can I just ask a real quick question about the rubric?
Sure. A follow-up question about the rubric.
And statistical programs like R or SPSS, a rubric is individualized, meaning you answer that first rubric and it's gone. You can't go back to change it. A problem with a pen and paper rubric is you have an understanding of what, that mnemonic that you want to get to to pick your winner. So you have that opportunity to kind of finagle your score. So you say Laura White is the one I want to be a 38. I want to get to a 38. But in most programs, you're not allowed to do that. Once you give your first rubric response, it's locked.
It's a guideline, and we're all supposed to be professionals.
Dr. Campley.
Oh, I thought this was.
So with regards to this, is it called an evaluation rubric? Yes. In the view and the conversation that I had with Dr. Russell, it really was intended to serve as a mechanism for keeping track of multiple candidate answers. And I mean, listen, after this conversation, hopefully, we'll get a couple. But if not, then that'll be a super easy situation, right? We won't need to write anything down. And Mr. Liggett's points about having it be a paper copy, I think are very valid. I think if we collectively, as a board, decide that we want to destroy them, once, like, these are for our eyes only, I think that that's very helpful as a note-taking mechanism. With regards to the questions, I want to be clear and fully transparent that during agenda planning, when we had this conversation, the conversation was to take a step forward to 2025, looking at precedent of other replacement activities. So it's not like it was invented by Dr. Russell. Dr. Russell didn't come up with the questions. She literally didn't really invent the rubric. She just put the questions in the order after I gave them and we decided on which, what they were. She didn't, she's not manipulating the process. The questions that I selected were probably from, I don't want, I want to say maybe eight or 10 lists of questions that were asked over the years, some of which were very pointed, to the point of the politics at the time, the hot ticket items at the time, specific to individual people that they knew would be in front of them, which is, again, was not the flavor of what I wanted. I did not want this to be a partisan interview process. I wanted to keep the questions, hopefully, as colorless as possible, and really in line with the values of the school district and the mission of the school district. I didn't, I intentionally didn't ask about books. I intentionally didn't ask about, one question on the old one was about turf. I intentionally didn't ask about that. I tried to take everything out that could have an indicator of a controversial flavor. And so I don't know specifically, Mr. Liggett, if you, of these 10 questions, because again, it could be 50 questions, we could make everybody sit up here and answer that many, of these 10 questions, and I just picked 10, because I don't know, 10 questions, were there questions that you felt weren't covered or questions that you took issue with of the ones that were presented as a first-pass draft? Because this is a draft.
Understood as a draft. Just to give you an idea of how I was thinking about this, before I go leaping to that question, the first thing I noticed is the structure of how this interview was to be conducted with a table.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A panel.
Yeah, yeah. This, to me, it is, it is more serious than that. It is, to me, that seems almost like a talk show format, especially if just one person is giving the questions to that there. I believe that even if with technology, if we ask a person to step out of the room voluntarily, I would much rather interview them individually and have them, have their answers not colored by a previous person, question there, regardless of whether you rotate. I like the idea that was in the current, or that it is one at a time. I understand that we cannot ask them legally to leave, because it's a public, it's a public meeting. But I do believe that we could ask for them to voluntarily step aside while we do the other interviews. I think structurally.
Do you feel like that would sway their answers, or do you feel like that would just make it more comfortable? Like, what's your reasoning?
I think possibly both.
Okay.
I don't need to, I'm interested in the individual's thoughts.
Do you think that every individual should have the same set of questions? It sounds like you don't feel that way.
Not necessarily.
So then, wouldn't it be apples to oranges?
I, it could be.
Okay.
It doesn't matter.
Which part doesn't matter?
All of it. Because it is very simple. The only requirement that we need to fulfill is a majority vote on the board. All the rest of this are, is, we're just arguing about how we're going to do that. The legal threshold is very small.
It's just majority vote.
Okay? So we're going through all these things. So in my mind, I want the process to be one that is as open and transparent as possible, that can bring in as many candidates as possible, and I want to be able to get to know them in the best way, not in a personal way, but I want to know how they think, because that is probably the single most important.
Indicator.
Attribute.
Yeah, sure.
For a board member. Whether they know tax. Whether they know tax policy, education policy.
Some things you learn on the job, right?
Yeah. All these things you can either learn, but how a person thinks is important. And some of that is how they get, how they deal with, with, with cross-talk.
Conversation.
How, how they answer, how they respond back. All of that is very difficult.
Demeanor, demeanor, that type of thing.
Demeanor.
Sure.
How are you going to do that with, in a, in a panel as effectively? The last thing is, they need to realize that they're being elevated to a board where each of us, all nine, are equal. The only difference between you and I on, on this board is you get to share it, and you have, you have a couple other things.
Facilitation.
That's correct. So to elevate somebody into this, then, it's, I think it is incumbent on us as a board member to be as comfortable as possible with how they are. Having only a set set of, of questions, you can make that part of the application process if you'd like, and I can, they can have time to work on it, we can have time to read it and absorb it. When it comes to the interview, that is a hot seat, as far as I'm concerned, and they should be able to handle the heat.
So, so I think that those points are valid in my mind. However, I feel as though by providing the questions ahead of time, it takes away some of that hot seat aspect to it, because.
Which question, the, the hot seat questions would not be the ones that they're provided beforehand. Part of the application process, why do you want to serve on the board? Paragraph, paragraph, whatever they say. We will then be able to read that, all of us. They have now answered that. I wouldn't ask them that again in an interview. Why do you want to be on the board?
Right. There was no redundancy.
Now, if they want to expound on that in an opening statement, that's their business.
Right.
This is a chance for us to ask questions, not necessarily that have been vetted by the rest of us, but as individuals to make our individual decisions so we can cast that vote properly. Which is why I would want to ask Mr. Saylor about a, a book challenge, which is why I would ask Dr. Weston about his objection to, to the labeling in, in the curriculum. Different, they're different.
And you say that as someone who's followed along, that understands specific questions to an individual. I, I guess my concern with that approach, though, Mr. Liggett, is that now, this person, whoever said person is, is elevated to the position. Now they're on the board. Okay? My concern is that there would be almost like a tainted association with that person based on the questions that that particular person was asked and answered. In other words, there wouldn't be equality to every single person giving their answer to a specific question.
I think if I were to elevate Mr. Saylor to the board without asking that question so that the public would know, would taint that. Not asking that would be a taint on the process.
And you would, you see it as your responsibility to point it out.
I see, yes. And, and whether, yes, I know him, I know of his past.
And you don't feel as though the questions?
If there's a stranger, I know nothing about this person. Where I'm going to learn about them is during this process of answering questions, and that's where the follow-up is. Or, hey, you answered this person like this, could you please expound on this? Or what's your view on religious holidays, maybe? That could now be a hot topic for this round of interviews.
Well, when you talked about making it a talk show, asking a question like that, to me, now creates a talk show environment, because now it's just going to be, and now, what if another?
Well, do you trust your board to ask intelligent questions? Because I, I trust the individuals here to not make a mockery or a circus of this interview.
You do?
Yes.
That's excellent. Okay, good. So that's excellent point. These 10 questions are the ones that I feel are very important. If there, do you have other ones that, or take issue with any of the ones that I've sort of culled? Are there other ones that you would add?
As of right now, not necessarily. Again, the content of the questions. No, no, I didn't say that. If you check your email, I sent you a.
I did read it.
You did read it.
But for the purposes of the table, is my question.
So that is not, and that, no, and I understand. I would actually suggest that we forward that to the rest of the board, so that they can perhaps get a flavor of a difference.
I'm actually, I'm comfortable with you, actually, we can talk about it now. Honestly, I, I thought that your email was absolutely thought out, well thought out and perfect with regards to your feedback and your thought process. So, I actually have no issue with you actually just reading your email.
Okay.
Okay, I'm literally reading it, because I, you said it better than, I mean, it was right on.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I don't know how to react to that.
Thank you, Laura. I mean, Ms. White.
Well, thank you, Laura. I think I said thank you there.
Yeah.
Ms. White.
Ms. White, thank you, Mr. Keenan. Very good. Go ahead, Mr. Liggett, go.
Well, I don't have my email up, but let me get that. I had the agenda.
I'd like to ask a question, Mr. Liggett, while you look for the.
I got it now, but go ahead.
So when you talk about candidate A having a history, and you know the history, and you want to drill down on their history, are you looking for an affirmation to them still being the same? Are you looking for a conversion to, because?
No, I'm looking for an explanation. The whole idea of the process is for, in my opinion, is for us to know, not, not just what the candidate thinks, but how they think about something. So, yeah, why, you know, back to that, you know, Mr. Saylor, why, why did you challenge this book? What are the things that you have here? It's not, not accu, it wouldn't be an accusation of, "I'm not going to vote for you because you did this." It's a learning of what their, their thought processes are. Even whether, whether I agree with them or not, because we're not supposed to be a partisan board. We're not supposed to stick a label on that person. Just because I may think that, that the way that they made a decision is, is wrong, perhaps the, getting that enlightenment of how they come to that decision is going to better inform me and make me more comfortable with voting for that person. For example, Mr. Saylor and I tend to be on different ends of the political spectrum, and yet we tend to also be able to understand how each other thinks and what are, what the thought processes of the other. Probably to the point where we could exchange arguing points and change, just because, yeah. All right, so the email that I, does it go?
Well, I'd like to say, so one last thing. So there, there's no perfect candidate, and there's no perfect process. So, what we're trying to get at is something that is fair and open and transparent.
And clear to the public. The public should know what that process will be before we do it. They shouldn't walk into the interview, to the meeting, not knowing what to expect.
Yeah, but, but what you're saying is, if any of us can just throw out any question about anything at any time, then it gets messy. And, and here's the thing about, as much as we want to be impartial and fair and equitable and everything like that, we're human beings or whatever, we have feelings, thoughts, how we think and look at one another. So, I think what you're asking is going to be hard to do, and, and the way you're putting it or whatever, without having some of those biases, things come through. So, but, but again, I hope we get some really good candidates who want to come forward and serve this community in a way that, again, allows for all of us to have interaction and engagement, that, again, thinks about the educational product we put out and the students, you know? So, I, I think what you're proposing will just get down to, if there's a person who has, and again, we keep using Mr. Saylor as the example, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Saylor, you know, a track record of, of something, then I think you can tend to, as Ms. White has said, target him on those things or whatever, that then paints him in a light that might not be conducive to the conversation.
And, and honestly, Mr. Liggett, before you read your email, so you said about the public understanding and knowing ahead of time? If, if everybody asks questions off the cuff, with follow-up questions off the cuff, how would that give the public a, a good idea about?
It's, the, the process needs to be.
The process of what needs to be established.
The process, that's correct. And if the, the public understands that part of the process is that.
That there is no process.
The candidate, the candidate is going to be asked open questions, and yes.
Okay.
I, I don't think that's unreasonable to do that.
In your view? Okay. Read your email.
I want to know who's going to come here and, and be willing to even volunteer to try and be on the board if they think they're going to come to a firing squad of people throwing questions at them to try and figure out they're down and dirty.
Dr. Campley, let's let him read his, his points.
Sure. Although mostly email is Dr., Ms. White and Dr. Russell, I apologize for the timing of this email, but considering the timeframes and the seriousness of this, I believe I would, it would be best to share this with you. You will find attached a rewritten board guideline. I agree that the board should update this guideline. I offer this with the aim of not drastically changing the process, but clarifying certain areas and remaining in our legal framework. The negatives of the current BOG, in my opinion, questions are not tailored to the candidate, and a lack of some detail. In my version, I'm attempting to allow for thorough questioning by the board of a candidate, shielding the influence of one candidate answers on the others while maintaining their rights as a citizen and a candidate. So, as I.
Okay, so then on that point, it was intentional that they were not tailored to a specific individual?
Correct.
That was intentional. So I guess, I guess the first question then I'll ask as a facilitator is whether or not the majority of the board agrees whether, that the, that the questions should be tailored to an individual, or if they should be broad. Dr. Weston?
I think the questions should be broad. I think they should be known in advance. Personally, if I am, I, I've, I've done this actually with the board a couple of times. We've been through a couple of, of replacements. We've been through a couple of, of selection processes. We have used the group interview format, and in my mind, it's always worked well. We've selected good candidates through those processes. My thought is that the questions should not necessarily be tailored to the candidate, but they should be tailored to the position. We're looking for people to fill a particular position, excuse me, and the, the questions should be designed or aligned towards, you know, somebody who is going to be in that position, and what those persons' thoughts are with regard to being in that position. When we run for this position, when we run for election, we are often given the opportunity to fill out a questionnaire by, by, you know, through, from, from, from a journalist or from some other organization that puts out the same questions to all the candidates so that the voters can look at the, the way all of the candidates have answered the questions and compare and contrast. But again, in that situation, you can't tailor the questions of the candidate. The questions are for the position. And so I think that's, that's kind of where I am with that. I would really want to see the questions made available to the candidates in advance because I'd rather hear what you have to say after you've had some time to think about things for a while, rather than just the first answer you give off the top of your head. And as far as that goes, you know, where if you have a group of candidates, the first person's going to answer the question. By the time you get to the last person, you know, depending on how many people you have, that person's had 10 minutes to think about his answer, where the first person hasn't had any time. You give all the, you give the questions in advance, everybody's had a certain amount of time to develop a considered response. Let me think, because there's been so much conversation going on, I'm trying to think of everything that I was thinking throughout the process. I, I do think there should be a standard set of questions. As Doc, as Dr. Campley has said, I fully agree that, you know, we should be giving, we should be not, or at least in the initial round of the interview, not doing, you know, additional or, or individualized questions. When we've done the, as far as I can remember, when we've done the, the group interviews for board candidates in the past, that's how we've done it. When I've done group interviews in, in my, in, in industry, when I was working, again, if we had a group, a group empaneled that was all being interviewed at the same time by a group, everybody got the same questions and they got the same opportunity to answer the questions. If we were doing one-on-one, you could have a little bit more back and forth. But if everybody was there being interviewed together, everybody got the same questions and everybody got the, 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 the same opportunity to answer. And, so I think mostly that's, that's where I am on, on, on the questioning. The other thing I'll say, I really hate rubrics. I find them restrictive. I find them incomplete. If I have a rubric, unless I am required to use it, I will use it maybe as a guideline, but I'm, I'm going to, I'm, I'm not going to actually fill it out. I will take my own notes and, you know, use, use my own notes as my, as my decision-maker. But, no, I hate rubrics. Sorry.
So, uniformity of questions?
Uniformated questions.
Broadness of questions, no rubric?
No rubric, and questions of the candidates in advance.
And questions of the candidates in advance, which was something else? Okay.
Right.
Those are the four.
Those are the four.
And I'll, I have another point to make, but I will, I will hold that till.
We do a roundtable to get this point under wraps?
Yes.
Cool. Dr. Campley, you've said that, just so I can paraphrase, well, so we can, you know, line 15. So, you want broad questions? You'd like the candidates to all have the same question. Do you care whether or not they're submitted beforehand, or if they're?
I actually think Dr. Weston made some very good points about the fact that if they're all given to them in advance, then the.
Everybody has the same opportunity to think about them.
Yes, I like that.
And then the rubric, you like that because you're familiar with it as well, but.
I'm familiar with the rubric. I don't think it's something that needs to be turned in. I think if somebody wants to use it as a guideline and to put notes on, and then if they're between a couple people and they want to use it to help make a decision, I think it's a good tool to have available. But I don't think it needs to be something that we are set in stone, that we have to use, that we're turning in.
Forced to abide by.
Exactly.
Fair enough. Mr. Fountain, on those points.
I think that the, the idea of having the questions beforehand, I think, is extremely important. And I think that that could even be put into the application itself so that they have answered them. But I do think that by having them beforehand, it gives them the opportunity to think it through before they actually have to, to respond to it in front of everybody. The only thing that I would, would really, and I also am not a real big fan of rubrics. I don't typically use them, but I do typically look at the idea of what my thoughts and feelings are about a particular candidate. The only thing that I would like to, I guess, add would be, I would like for each one of them to be able to prepare a written statement that they would be able to read. It would be unique to them, answering some of the things that Mr. Liggett was talking about a while ago, some of their own thoughts, their own opinions, but making that part of their, basically, an opening statement for each individual. Whether the questions are then posed to them from the, the set list of questions, that would be perfectly fine. It's supposed to be a, a public, a public application process. But having them provide a statement of their own, in their own.
In their own words.
Words, of exactly what they are doing here, why they are wanting to be it, and why they feel that they would be a good candidate.
So that capture, I think, the intention was in that submission, on those submission documents. I don't know if you had a chance to look at those three questions on the submission documents, that would have been part of their resume, with their interest. I think my thinking was in line with that, that they could sort of give their why behind that. So if you would want, if we would collectively want, we would have access to their submission documents as a board for review, but if you would want that, those answers to be shared publicly, I, I don't have any issue with that.
I think that the, the, this would not be a statement that would be necessarily shared on the application. This would be their opening statement.
No, no, I understand, but I'm saying the intention, in lieu of the opening statement format, my, my intention of having those three questions asked along with submission of interest was, was to gather that same vibe. Does that make, does that make sense, what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying. I, I think that is, there's a difference there.
You think, you think that there's a difference, a nuance difference?
Yeah.
Okay, understood. So are you okay with the questions as proposed in, in terms of their broadness, or do you think that they should be more tailored to the individual? Are you okay with the questions being developed beforehand?
The questions, I think that there's, there's tons of others that could be asked. There's a few that, that wouldn't necessarily, I don't think there's any, any particular list of questions that's going to fully give a complete picture.
That's where I said about the 10 as just an arbitrary. That's where I said about the 10 as just an arbitrary.
So as far as questions in general, they seem to be okay from my standpoint.
Okay. So do you, in terms of the direction that you would like to see this go, would you like it to be in line with keeping the questions broad and providing them ahead of time?
For them to be able to prepare a, a response ahead of time to be able to think about it so that they're not just right off the cuff.
Off the fly, on the fly.
But again, also to have an, an opening statement.
The opening statement is the piece that you would add?
Mm-hmm.
Got it. Mr. Saylor?
Thank you. You know, I, I think this is, for a board member, this is the second most important vote a board member will take. First is when you make a vote to hire a superintendent. Hiring a new board member is just as an important vote. So I think it's great on an application process to have questions. That's, that's great. You can make them broad, what have you. But once they're in the room, I do not think there should be any silencing of a board member having the ability to ask that person a question, nor should we tell the individual who wants to join the board that they only have two or five minutes to make a statement. They should be able to make a statement for whatever statement they want to make. If it's five minutes, if it's 15 minutes, we know no one's going to bloviate for an hour. They should be given that opportunity, and then there should be an opportunity for board members to ask questions and for, for those questions to be answered. Anything else would be silencing the board member's legal right to ask questions before they cast a really important vote.
So I don't know that anybody is trying to silence any other board member. I think we're just trying to come to a consensus of what the majority would like the process to look like, so there's some sort of an organization around it. So noted. And I, Mr. Fountain, do you agree or disagree with what Mr. Saylor said? Just so I can get a, a temperature on, on the direction that we're trying ahead here.
Again, I think-
I know, it seems like it's more cumbersome somehow, this new microphone.
I gotta change it around. Yeah, I, I hear what he's saying. I do agree in theory with what he is saying. There's no question about that. I think that the difficulty with doing that is more from a, a time factor because there's going to be, I mean, if it's open, it would be potentially a ton of questions that might be directed towards just one individual. And that I don't know. I mean, it, when you run for an office, many people don't have the opportunity to ask the kinds of questions like that, that they might really want to know, but they don't necessarily have the opportunity to ask those questions. So I agree in theory. I don't know that it would be workable in practice.
Practical. So if, with the direction, in practice, just so I understand where you're at, do you want it to be more in the structure that's being proposed, or would you rather go in a different direction?
Again, just as I said a while ago, the, the, the structure as is proposed with the idea of them having access to do the research on how they want to answer the question.
That was your add to that.
And then the add of that opening statement. And again, I think that I agree with Mr. Saylor as far as not necessarily saying you have two minutes to do an opening statement. It might take four, it might take five, it might take one.
Sure.
But I think that that would be something.
That there's the opportunity.
The opportunity is there.
Say what you want to say. Okay, understood. Thank you. Mr. Liggett? Just to reiterate.
Hello. I apologize to everybody for how long this is taking. Anyway, with your permission, or again, I would, I would ask the, the, that the guideline that I had sent to you perhaps be sent to the board so they will see at least what I was talking about here. The other thing is, believe it or not, I, the version that I sent to you, I would say that was my ultimate ask. I think that I would like to have the board members free to ask questions of the candidate during the interview process. I have no objection to fully front-loading as much as you want, questions for the application that we would be able to read and that they would be able to take time to prepare their answers for. That would give us a chance to know them. After reading those, that's when I would like to have the ability to question the person. In my first draft of this, because one of the things that I felt that in, what was proposed to us, was that all present, all the questions coming from, come from the president. And to me, that's not representative of how the board should work. Each of the board members should have a voice and questions and be a part of the process.
And so that's why I'm wondering what questions you'd like to see here. There needs to be some sort of an organization and facilitation component.
Yes. And in my first draft here, for the, for the interview portion, I basically said the president of the board will start the interview process, will ask three questions that are identical for each of the candidates, and then we'll follow up with a, a fourth question, basically of your personal choice. And then each board member in turn would have a chance to ask a question of the candidate that was there. We've already at this point known whatever they've submitted in their application. We would at that point have answers to say three questions that we would, that would be identical and therefore fair for all those, all those people, whether they know them previously or not. They would be the same questions, so you could evaluate them on that. And it allows the board members the freedom and the ability to dive deeper into particular issues or in answers that they receive from that. And then once you go through that, you could close that round of voting or, or of, of interviews unless the board decides to do it again. So you're not going to have chaos of one person hammering the person with five questions. You get your question, a follow-up, and then you move on to the next board member. And it could proceed in that way. The thing that I'm trying to preserve is the freedom and the ability of the individual board member to ask questions that they feel is relevant to making their decision.
And that, but that's what I'm asking you. I'm asking you what you want those questions to be so we can incorporate them.
You're assuming that I would know that. It may be an individual question. I do not want to be locked into, this must be my question.
Okay.
I want the, the ability to ask whatever I want.
Okay, so how-
And I, and I, and just to, obviously, it's going to be relevant.
But at any time, to, to whoever? So there's no continuity between, and this isn't accusatory. There's no continuity between candidates then, theoretically? Like in other words, you may ask candidate one-
Because I don't know how you can restrict me. I mean, we could do that, but like I said, in the, when we were discussing the books, it wouldn't be a relevant question to another candidate, possibly.
Well, it would be relevant to every candidate.
Now, could I ask everybody, what is their favorite color? And then ask each candidate what their favorite color is? I could do that. I'm not going to learn anything by that, or I may not learn anything relevant by it. I think that the important thing for me is-
But that, but the question would be important to each candidate, because how that person answers that particular question would give you a sense of each individual's person's position on, on the decisions that as a board member we have to make about that topic.
Perhaps, but I still do not think that I, that we need, we should have a portion of this process where we're not limited and can explore.
Noted.
Because especially on their answers. You ask them something simple and they come up with something. We need the ability to dive in. That is my responsibility, because before I seat that person, I want to understand how they are thinking. And if I am stuck in these pre-prepared questions, I, it, I lose that freedom.
I hear what you're saying. I, I guess, I guess-
Voters, when they elect us, they ask their own questions of us outside of things that are questionnaires. They're going to pull, pull us aside and say, what's your opinion on this? We're doing that here in public.
Yeah.
We're go, we, we, and we need the freedom to do that, because this is a substitute for an election.
I understand that part, yeah.
It is, it isn't a popularity contest. It, it, it's serious business.
That's why I feel like the questions should be the same, right.
Which I'm trying to take seriously, because otherwise, we could literally just draw lots if we chose by, by a majority vote to do that. We're not doing that. We're taking this seriously, and some of that means that I need the freedom to explore an issue deeper than what is pre-prepared.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Keenan, how do you feel about the process as presented majority on this side versus Mr. Liggett's position?
I think it's very important that we get to ask questions of the candidates to determine whether they deserve our vote to lead our school district, just as it would be in any election.
Do you think that there should be this format, or how do you foresee the, the process itself From a structure standpoint? Should there be a facilitation? Should there be a, a period of time, you know, in incorporating some of what Mr. Liggett said in terms of, of allowing there to be free dialogue? Do you think there should be a section of the process that's like that in addition to questions that are offered in a broad sense, so everybody has the same opportunity to answer?
There's a wide range of how this could go.
Right.
What I think is the best for each individual board member sitting around this table is that each individual board member gets an allotment of time to ask a few questions and, of the candidate, and see if they respond, and what they respond.
Okay, so in, in developing a structure that is transparent for the community and also for the candidates, so they have an expectation of what they're walking into, we, we'll have to develop some sort of an agenda or guideline around that. So understanding that you want to be able to ask questions, I, I guess my question to you is what type of format do you think that should be facilitated? Do you think it should be, you know, Mr. Keenan, you have five minutes, ask whatever questions you'd like to whoever, or I, I guess I'm trying to understand how we can implement what you're saying.
I pretty much exactly said it. I would like a few minutes to ask some questions of this candidate. So I don't understand how that, as my desire, could be misinterpreted in anything else.
Okay.
But again, the format-
Are you uncomfortable with a hybrid option? In other words, that it would be some of what we discussed so far in terms of the rubric process and the application process, and then in the addition that you would like then some opportunity to ask questions?
I have been in numerous vacancy hearings, and there are usually a general set of questions that are asked and presented of each candidate, but in my recollection, there has been an opportunity for board members to ask questions as well. That's just my recollection.
Okay.
And it's my belief that at that public meeting, I cannot be censored. But that's just my belief.
I understand. So that's why, so we can come to a, a consensus.
And that could result, I mean, that, the ultimate operation of the meeting could, you know, be run in various ways. Again, from what Jason just mentioned in passing, like if I ask them something and they just don't answer, they don't answer. If, and it could happen to anyone here. Or, you know, the meeting, the question could be called, and the meeting could move on. You know, there are many things that could happen. But again, within the parameters of interviewing these people and having a public voice, my public voice, I, you know, no one of us is more important than the other.
Understood. But that's why, again, I would have come to a consensus of exactly what procedurally will be. So I hear what you're saying, that you would like to not be censored with regards to you wanting to have, say, Mr. Liggett feels that way, Mr. Saylor feels that way, and Mr. Fountain agreed in theory, but you feel as though-
Well, in, in hearing what has been talked about, as far as limiting that amount of time that you have to ask questions, that puts it into a better perspective, because then it's not going to be like a, a, a 20-minute dissertation.
An onslaught, right.
Yeah, I think that if, if it, and Mr. Liggett had mentioned the idea of having the question that you're posing and then a follow-up question of your choice. Mr. Keenan had talked about the idea of having an amount of time. Both of those, having that limitation on it, I think both of those could be a very viable way of doing it.
That we agree by consensus, and then that way it can be implemented. I, I just don't want, I want there to be a structure and a purpose so we can get to the end goal, which is obviously the vote, right? So I, I guess that's my, my purpose of, of getting a temperature. Mr. McKinney, do you have a stance that you'd like to take with regard to how you'd like to see the process run?
I guess I most closely identify with what Dr. Weston and Dr. Campley put out there. One of the things that I would not like to see is I would not like to see the applicants have an unlimited amount of time to pontificate about anything. And then the only other question I have is, if board members are allotted a certain amount of time to ask questions, can that board member then yield their time to another board member if they don't take up all their time? Like, so I would hate to see that. I would think if you don't use it, you lose it.
Okay, so you, well, we don't ever yield time to each other with regards to, and we don't do that during public comment either, so I would tend-
But if we're saying we're going to give each board member a-
A chunk of time, that was one scenario. Okay. Okay, so, um, does everybody collectively feel comfortable with a hybrid approach which incorporates some of what we've talked about with regards to the set of broad questions and then a component of a free, like, maybe this is like round one questions, however many? Again, is 10 too many then, if we go this other, take this other tact, and then have a separate category of more free-answer questions per individual board member? Is everybody okay with a hybrid approach like that, to incorporate both sets of voice?
Again, I think we're not going to find a perfect system, so I think that's the closest thing to giving everybody what they want.
And that's why I was, I was trying to go on precedent, which Dr. Weston alluded to, the fact that this is the way it has been done before, and there was, I don't think that there was free dialogue in previous iterations.
I, I do want to go back and review the minutes of my notes from those previous meetings, just to, to make sure that my recollections collect correct, sorry. I don't recall that there was a lot of free back and forth. There, there may have been, and I, I do want to verify that. So yeah, I'm, I'm in basic agreement with, with the, what you're calling a, a hybrid approach. One other thing that I do want us to think about, there will be eight of us voting. I don't know how many people remember the, the, the replacement of a board member that took place back in 2017. To kind of sum up what, what was going on, between the election in November and the board reorganization meeting in December, there was a resignation on the board and a call for candidates to, to, to fill the, to fill the replacement. It came down to two candidates in the end, and the board was completely deadlocked through multiple votes. And if one of the candidates had not withdrawn from consideration, I think we would probably still be here, trying to resolve that deadlock. This is something that I think nobody wants to see happen again, and there should be something in this operating guideline that discusses how to resolve an impasse, a deadlock. And I don't know, I have no suggestion for what that would be. I would not want it to come down to a coin toss. That would be completely inappropriate. I don't want to see, you know, the superintendent casting the deciding vote. That would also be completely inappropriate, and I see Mr. Super-
There's only one way.
So I think it would be more than inappropriate.
Yeah, but that's already, but that's already done. It's-
There's only one way under the law. A judge is the only one that can break a tie.
Okay. And I don't think any of us want it to get to that point either, so.
Well, Mr. Super, no, no, that's-
Well, Mr. Subers, no, that's maybe-ish. 10 human beings that live in the school district then need to petition the court to say the school board is derelict in their duty. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's correct. If the board does not make a determination or an appointment by a majority of vote, within 30 days, 10 resident taxpayers can file a petition with the Court of Common Pleas, and the Court of Common Pleas would appoint a person to fill the vacancy.
So maybe that might be, I, like I say, I don't think we're going to come up with a way tonight, but maybe, you know, as we continue to discuss this, we could think about ways to do that.
And next week, we can have a follow-up discussion, we can keep it on the agenda, but again, there's, we have 30 days, the other piece...
Right, no, the clock is ticking.
Yeah.
Lloyd, I'm confused, I apologize. Dr. Weston, what are you suggesting we come, I'm confused what we come up with? You said we have to have a plan to come up with it.
Say what?
You mentioned just now that we need to have a plan to...
And I said, I have no idea.
With what?
He's looking for a consensus, I think you're looking for a consensus as to what would happen.
Yeah.
What would happen is, the law already says that the 10 citizens can appeal the court and the court will appoint the board member.
And I think we don't want it to get to that point, so how do we as a board want to address this if it comes up?
There's nothing that Board Operating Guidelines can do, and Mr. Subers, I can tell he's ready to say that as well. It's, there's nothing that policy or BOG or anything can do if we don't get five votes and 10 citizens decide to petition the court. The court will then look at the reasonings and potentially appoint the board member for us.
You need the five votes.
Correct.
You have to secure five votes, affirmative votes for the appointment.
Or the scenario, Dr. Weston, that you mentioned that happened previously would happen, that some, one of the two would have to step back
Right.
between the two of them. Right, I guess that's really what it comes down to in that scenario.
Yeah, then you're going to get the five votes that way.
Right. Dr. Campley?
I just wanted to say, as far as the consensus piece, where we have a few questions that are standard and then an opportunity, I would like to throw in that, going with that compromise, that each board member be only allowed to ask one follow-up question. That would limit it to eight questions additional. And it would also prohibit and ensure that no one person was asking an amount of questions that would make it feel like an interrogation.
So, one follow-up question, I think, is less than they're looking for. I also would also venture that, I would add to that. I'm not opposed to just one per, however, for the most important thing. I personally feel as though every single candidate should answer whatever the follow-up question is. And I understand your reasoning, Mr. Liggett, for that not being the case. But I think that it's very important for me that each candidate be afforded the opportunity to respond from their point of view, whatever the follow-up question for an individual would be.
That's assuming that they're in the room at the same time, correct?
So, I heard what you were saying about having people step in and out of the room. I didn't, I thought that that was on the table, that we were leaving that be, to be the baseline, that everybody would be together in the same room, based on precedent. Go ahead, Mr. Subers, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, I have seen it where persons are interviewed separately and the same questions are repeated to the candidates, notwithstanding that it's asked the same question to every candidate. They did, and the candidates were just out in the lobby, and I guess there's, you know, they trusted the candidate.
If I could step in quickly.
Actually, you're not a voting member of the board, Mr. Lee.
I know I'm not a voting member, but I, and I'm saying this with the understanding.
At the end of the meeting, if you'd like to make a comment that addresses us, I'm happy to have you comment. I absolutely appreciate and respect student participation, but right now, we're just going to have discussion between the voting members of the board.
Sure, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McKinney, do you have something that you'd like to add? I just want to make sure that we get the format in place before we talk about, there was another piece of it. Oh, how long we leave the posting open?
No, I don't have a concern about that or an ideal about that. The thing that I would say about the one follow-up question or a follow-up question, that every candidate is asked the same question or similar questions, is if we follow Mr. Liggett's reasoning or rationale for having the ability to have the freedom to ask a candidate a specific thing according to their history, I think that gets a little hard to then ask the question of every candidate, so I would just be opposed to that.
All right, so at this point, if you'd like to take the word rubric off of this chart, I suppose, I don't have any objection to that. I mean, call it whatever you want. I do think that we need some sort of a guide to lead us through the questions and an opportunity in place to take notes. Where you write that is sort of irrelevant, I suppose. I think the questions being offered beforehand, I don't necessarily see the absolute need, but I don't have a disagreement with that. And I don't have any issue with allowing there to be a follow-up question as long as it is the same question offered to every candidate.
Do we have the same understanding about what a follow-up question is? Because, to me, it is...
We said two different things. You said you wanted an open forum to ask questions, but then also the opportunity to ask follow-up questions.
That is correct, because those are two different things.
Right.
And the follow-up question means that I ask a question, receive an answer, and then ask another question related to that answer, just so that we're all on the same page for what a follow-up question is. So if I, as a board member, have one question and one follow-up, that means I ask my initial question. If I'm satisfied with the answer, we move on. If I choose to add, to have that follow-up, then I would say, well, you said that you like hamburgers best. Can you please tell me what about hamburgers it is that you like?
So I did understand that's what you meant, but I was trying to come to a compromise.
I understand.
So, so you're still wanting to, what are you, you're still wanting open-ended questions?
I believe it is an important part of the process.
Okay.
Can I ask another question to the solicitor, because I asked it, so I didn't get an answer? BOGs?
Yeah, I know what your question is. I have never been through this process where a board could not agree on how to conduct the process.
Yeah.
So, you know, and you're asking me, can a majority of the board impose a process on the board as in the entirety? I want to research that to be, support an issue, I want to make sure I give you the right answer. But, that's the issue. Can the majority of the board, you know, impose a process upon, you know, the entirety of the board? And I'd like to get back to you on that, because I've never dealt with this situation where a board has not agreed amongst themselves how to conduct the process.
So, again, I just, to reiterate that point, I don't know that there was ever an intention for there to be an imposition of compliance.
It's looking like that's where we're headed.
I hear that, I hear that too, but that wasn't the intention. The intention was to come to consensus so there would be an organization around the process.
Can I tell you why I don't like it? Because I was, I was in the building in, Dr. Campley, you know, I try, I know you don't, you don't like, like, you don't like me, but when I see you, I ask you how you're doing, I care, I don't need the bones.
What's your point, Doctor, Mr. Saylor?
I was here in 2017, when Brewer was ripped and ridiculed for what he did. And it happened at the board level during the process.
That's what I'm trying to avoid.
And he didn't get, he didn't get the opportunity to defend himself. And I don't want to see anyone attempt to run for the board and not get an opportunity to get everything off their chest to run. What happened in 17 was a joke. It was a codified program so that the board could ensure that they were going to have their selected respondent win. That's exactly what happened.
Okay, I think that's your perception of what happened.
Sure, sure, I said, this is my opinion of, in 17, being in the room when it happened.
Right.
I don't want to see that happen. I don't understand. Do you really think I'm going to come to a meeting and ask nine hours' worth of questions? And I'm going to sit there and grill someone like it's a Senate hearing? No. God love anyone who wants to run for the school board, I think it's important. I'm knocking on 6,000 doors to try to win myself, but I'm not going to do that, but it should be open-ended. Because, as Mr. Liggett has said, I might have a different question for him than I might have for somebody else. And those things are important. If someone decides to run for the school district who has no kids in the school district and owns eight parcels of land in Swansville and pays a lot of taxes, and that's really important to that person, I might ask, if you didn't pay your taxes, how would the school board get money? Because I've spoken, I've gone to Lower Frederick and knocked on doors and spoken to people who don't understand that they pay so much in taxes and they don't have anyone in the school district, and they're living on social security. And I have to sit there like the dunce that I am and say, my first thought process is, shoot, if you didn't pay that $8,000, how would the lights be turned on? Because as I look at Lower Frederick, I see that $8,000, and that $12,000, and that $15,000, and I understand you're all on social security and it breaks my heart, but at the end of the day, that's how we in PV make money. And then if I see someone in another area and they have another issue, I have six kids in the school district and my concerns are X, Y, and Z, those elicit different thought processes and questions and queries and wonderings about why someone wants to join the board and then how they might vote on my taxes, on your taxes, on the next superintendent, on the next assistant superintendent. So, it is different than carrot-cake questions of, tell me why you love public education, why you think you run for the board.
So none of those questions were actually part of the questions that were proposed? And so if there are questions specifically, again, I don't disagree with the fact that different questions prompt different answers. However, I am really having a hard time understanding how asking these questions of individuals with the same question going to each individual will not help you get the flavor of the person. That's what I'm having a hard time understanding, because the questions, as I see them...
If I would have answered those questions when I ran in 2018, you would not have gotten the flavor of what I've brought to the board. That's just the truth. I know, like, I'm ripping myself, but I'm just, I'm being honest. There's no way that if I sat in that, at that table and answered the questions that are out there, the questions that were out there in 2017, that anyone would walk away.
So these are not the questions that were out there in 2017?
I know, they were a little bit different, but you wouldn't get the flavor of who I am from those questions. You would get the flavor from a secondary or tertiary question, but not from those questions. You just wouldn't.
Okay, so, so I'd like, I'd like to come to a compromise in the follow-up question piece of it. Is it reasonable to provide questions and that each board member would have the opportunity to ask a follow-up question to that question? That's eight additional potential questions to each individual question? Because you're wanting to dig deeper. So, let's pick one. This one. I'll pick one that's not on here, so we're not, you know, letting the cat out of the bag. Here's one that's not pertinent anymore. What are your thoughts on investing in turf facilities and how the district should proceed? Question, candidate one, two, three, four. Now, every board member gets to ask each individual candidate one follow-up question to that question, based on their answer.
That would not be how I'd see it. Eight follow-up questions from that?
Everybody wants an opportunity, so they should be granted it.
If I ask the question about the turf, I get an answer, turf is evil. I go, why do you think it is evil? I've asked the question, the follow-up has been answered, you move on. That does, a follow-up wouldn't mean...
But what if, what if Mr. Keenan has a follow-up to your follow-up?
Then Mr. Keenan has the opportunity, when it is his turn to question, to say, you know, back when you were talking about the turf being evil?
But then we're bouncing all, there's no structure for the process.
Not if we're doing, the structure could be, you get a single question, a follow-up, and you move on. That is a structure.
But that's not what's being presented in terms of compromise right now. So I'm offering, based on this structure...
Do you really think that eight follow-up questions to the single thing, because...
Well, no, I would pass, so maybe by the time it gets to me, I don't need any follow-ups, because I've now heard your follow-up, and your follow-up, and your follow-up. And there might not be a follow-up. Maybe you, maybe the answer they gave was, was okay.
Yeah. I believe that you're looking at it as a communal question
Correct.
that's being there. And I look at questions as individuals, as coming from a board member to the candidate.
But, but we're a, we're a board of eight, in the instance of this, of this process. We're not individuals, we have an individual vote, but we're a board of eight.
With eight voices.
The idea of the eight follow-up questions to each person, I think, that would, that would not necessarily...
Hypothetical.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, I agree with Mr. Liggett on this one, where it's, if you ask the question and then you have a follow-up to that question of one or more of them, but specifically even to just one, that would be the follow-up question to the one that you were asking. It would not necessarily have to be a follow-up question directed to each candidate.
So then how is it decided what question the board member is asking if there's not a list of questions offered?
I would, very simple, you would say, Dr. Weston, may I ask your question of the candidate?
And so none of us would know ahead of time what Dr. Weston's question was, or what his follow-up question was?
Correct. Because Dr. Weston is a board member trying to make up his mind, and he has the ability to formulate an intelligent question that may bring that knowledge to the rest of the group. He's already read through the applications, resumes, and all that. He has a flavor of the candidate. I can trust him to do that, and then you go to, then you move on. I don't have to be that in control of the process when it comes to the individual questions itself. I would trust the structure and move on.
So how will the structure work if there's no facilitation of the question asking?
Just as we do it when we're in the board meeting. You should be able to say, will you please ask your question of the candidate? You ask the question, you ask the follow-up, you move on. It's, I don't see how going around the room, asking a question, is a programmatic, structural problem. It's just a matter of figuring out that you can do this. It's very simple.
I'm really not trying to be dumb about it, honestly, Mr. Liggett.
No.
I just, I'm... So then, in facilitating who's asking the question, do you think that there would be... How is equity brought to the process as to who gets to ask which question to who? Whether I go to Mr. Saylor first, or I go to Mr. Keenan first?
I'll decide equity if everybody wants me to.
I'm not, I'm not trying to be lame about it, honestly, I really am not, I'm missing the point, obviously.
I don't think you can miss the point, and I don't think you can get around it. If you don't want me to ask my questions of the candidate, don't bring them here.
Okay, well, that sounds a little bit like a threat, but I, you know...
So, my...
But you're trying to silence me and censor me, so...
No, I'm not, no, I'm not trying to silence or censor anybody, I'm trying to come to a consensus.
The whole idea was a compromise. If we want to have follow-up questions, the follow-up question is your opportunity to ask a question that is not, that nobody really knows what that follow-up question is going to be. You ask a question, you ask a follow-up question, it's not in the list, it's based off of something that they said that generates a thought in your mind, that's like, you know what, I want to know more about X, because they said X, Y, and Z, so I want to know more about X. So now I'm going to ask a question. After they answer question number three, I want to know more about X. Anyone here has an opportunity, because we all get an opportunity to ask a follow-up question, I want to know more about X. It's your turn now to have your follow-up time, you want to know more about Y, so you ask about Y. But I pass, because you know what? Somebody asked about X, somebody asked about Y, I don't need to know about Z, because I'm good. But everybody had an opportunity. That's what's, that's what compromise is. It's not you get all of what you want, and you get all of what you want. It's, we're going to have a set of questions, okay? But we're also going to have an opportunity to ask open-ended questions as a follow-up off of those questions. That's compromise. I don't know why we're sitting here deliberating for 50,000 years and arguing this to a point that we cannot come to some sort of consensus and we're making it sound like we're censoring and we're not allowing people to have a voice. This is utterly ridiculous.
You've made it well-known that you're concerned that Rowan and I might ask questions that you don't think should happen. that you don't think should happen. And in another...
I've never said your name, but if you want to act like you're going to interrogate somebody, go for it.
Sure. And in another world, that would be considered, people like Rowan and I would consider that being... Oh, censored.
I think in general, that nobody should be forced to sit there and be fired, question after question after question after question, in general.
Who said that? Who's going to do that?
I never said anybody specifically was going to do it. But I've seen people do it on this board, to individuals on this board. And I don't think a candidate coming up should have it. So there's candidate 1, 2, 3, and 4. It is not equitable to have only candidate 3 get the questions fired at them, while 1, 2, and 4 get to sit there pretty and only have a few questions. I think it needs to be fair amongst all.
That's the problem with public education right now. We try to pigeonhole everything, but the real world is, people should have the ability to think and develop answers as they please, and the world is open-ended. And we're trying to create an open-ended process, where on some example Saturday morning, we might meet for three or four hours, have some conversation with individuals who want to run for the board, and then see if we can get to five. And not pigeonhole it to say, Mr. Liggett, you get one question, one follow-up, Mr. Rowan, you'll ask question C, Mr. McKinney, you'll ask question D. It's open-ended. And that's how the real world works. When you're in a job interview outside of public education, you sit in a room with people, they fire questions off to you, and you answer those questions. You don't get the questions in advance. I think it's great that we might ask questions in advance and have them come out and see it. But in the world that I would see, during the application process, the people that want to apply, answer a bunch of questions. We read those questions. When it comes times to interview, we now say, all right, person A is up. Anyone have a question? And board members ask that person questions, and you move on. And then you make a vote. And if you get 4-4, you think about it some more. In years past, I think you've removed people, Ms. White, with the lowest vote total. Like, if some people got two, but other people got three, then the twos are gone, and then there's less of a group.
The rounds, right.
And then you keep, yeah, and then you keep doing that until you get five. And if you don't get five, then I can tell you right now, the petitions will be sent to the court, and the court will appoint.
Or someone will step down.
Can I propose...
If 10 people decided...
Yeah, can I propose a question to Mr. Liggett, Mr. Keenan, and Mr. Saylor? If we have a process where we have the, whatever number of set questions, and then each board member gets asked a question to each candidate, and one follow-up question, does that satisfy your concerns?
If a judge said to you, you can only ask the defendant one question, one follow-up, would that satisfy you?
It's a different context.
But you would say no to that, right?
It's not a different context.
It's not, it's the same.
It's our children, it's my children.
I'm not, I was just posing a question to the three of you.
So the answer to that, for me, is no. Any opportunity that would tell me that I have to be in a box.
Okay, so the answer is no. I'm just proposing that as a way of...
Trina, are you sure about this? Before I get put into the box...
You sure you want out? You done?
Before I get put into the box, what I'm trying to preserve is the ability of a board member to ask independently a question. I think a follow-up is fair. Would I be, I would be satisfied with the one. That is, I believe that there needs to be a portion, like we were saying, the hybrid and the compromise, a portion where the board member is able to ask what they wish. Yes, there can be limits on it, whether it be, Rowan suggested the time, I don't know whether or not the time limit is practical. I would have no issue with the, ask the predetermined questions, same as of every candidate, and give me an opportunity to ask a question independently. Single question, with that follow-up. I may not even choose to use that. I may have all the information I need before that. I think we're starting to spin scenarios of, well, of course, we've been discussing this for like an hour.
The scenario that was spun was censorship of board members, and that's, honestly, it's just, it's unfounded, in my view, because we're here having a discussion about how we would like the process to play out. So there really is no censorship.
I don't believe I accused anybody of censorship.
No, you certainly did not, but, no, you did not. You were looking to compromise and develop a process. And I appreciated that in your email, and in our...
While preserving...
And in our dialogue.
Yes.
Absolutely understood, Mr. Liggett. But it was clearly stated that, or insinuated, that the process would not be followed as decided, because there was a desire to just ask whatever questions they wanted without silence. And that's different than a consensus of a process, in my view. So I'm looking for partnership and leadership in developing a consensus of a process to appoint somebody to this board.
So let me just talk about something that's not directly on point, but it's interesting. It's interesting to me. I had a baby in 2022. Does anybody else here have a baby in 2022? So you don't know, all right? And it's not your fault. But my son doesn't have a mother, because Phoenixville Hospital erased mother from his records there, while we were there. Do you think that's appropriate? This is happening. It's real. And my children are in the midst of it, and are being attacked by it on all sides. All right? So I'm looking out for their best interests, and the things that we thought were nonpartisan and taken for granted 30 years ago, and most of the people on this board, I believe, agree with me on, that don't even need to be spoken, today have to be spoken. Because that's what we're dealing with. And that's where I'm coming from, and that's what I'm going to do to protect my children. Because I don't want people on the board that are going to put my daughters at risk. All right? We're back to that again, all right? I've got three young girls, middle school and under. And that's where I come from, and no one else here does, right now.
So for those of us on the board that have children, I will say that every decision I make is in the best interest of not only my child, but also your child. Whether or not you believe or we agree on things, Mr. Keenan, my decisions are absolutely in the best interest of children, and I believe that every educator in every one of our buildings has those interests at heart as well. So, and we don't have to, that's my stance. That's my stance. So I don't believe that everybody comes to the table with the best intentions. I do believe that everybody comes, or I have hoped that everybody comes to this table with best intentions. So I'm looking for an opportunity to select the best of those that want to step forward to serve, in this interim two-year period, without an election, as Mr. Liggett has pointed out, this is in lieu of an election. Many of us did not have a public forum like this one to run on, or be heard by, there's no school board debates that are televised, that doesn't exist, and that's not something that we have the opportunity to do, other than door knocking.
If PB Forward would like to debate me, I'll debate with them any day.
So again, politics aside, because we're elected members, we're elected members, we're elected members here, and you and I can sit and debate, because we're elected members by our constituents, all day long, because we won the seat at the table. Dr. Sadler's stepping away from the table, and we need to find somebody to sit in her place. And they need to answer a set of questions to prove that they deserve and want to be here, and are up to snuff. You're not going to necessarily agree with everything that they're going to say, no doubt. I absolutely agree that you should be able to dig deeper, as Mr. Liggett said, and get some more information out of it. I don't know that the birth certificate of your child is really going to help, if that's the question, you're going to ask them what their opinion is on, I don't know that what that has to do with public education. But again, if we can come up with some sort of a structure that we can implement for these folks, that hopefully, again, after this discussion, we will have some folks step up to say that they want to fill this position, that's what I'm trying to ascertain. I'm not looking to censor you, I'm not looking to change your mind, really, about anything either. I just am looking for a mechanism to receive the information.
Can we put up for vote next week, Mr. Liggett's BOG that he put together?
We can vote on Mr. Liggett's BOG right now.
Well, we can't.
Because you didn't see it.
The board hasn't seen it.
Understood.
And it's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
And we can't see it either.
That's fine.
But in an effort to, because there are people that still want to do public comment, that came here, and I'm sure they have some things that are important to them, and I don't see us getting anywhere on this topic tonight, or maybe we could do public comment, and then go back to what we're talking about.
Okay, so I think once we, I would rather not do that. I'd rather wrap this up. And I know that Dr. Weston had also sent an email, which was also very detailed with regards to feedback about his thoughts around the memo and the BOG. You had mentioned, Dr. Weston, that you didn't really feel as though there were very many changes.
I think I summarized everything.
That you said, 100%.
Pretty much what I put in my email is what I was talking about tonight.
100%, you did. So I'm just reiterating that we also did consider that. I know that Mr. Liggett took it to the next level, and actually redlined and made edits. I'm happy to entertain that. I didn't, I personally am of the opinion with Dr. Weston, that that level was unnecessary. But I understood Mr. Liggett's position to provide that as a talking point. So...
And if that's the case, I'd just like this solicitor to come with a final answer on Monday then, because it...
Agreed.
Yeah. Because if we're not bound by BOG, then...
That's a very important question.
Correct.
Okay, so we'll, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, Ms. White, I think it's telling that Mr. Schuber said he has never seen a board come to such an end pass, and he's been doing this a long time, which just shows me that this is the Perkin Valley School District School Board, being the Perkin Valley School District School Board, where we can't come to consensus on nothing. We couldn't come to consensus on making a ham sandwich. And that's the sad thing about this. I mean, like, and the thing about it is, like, I think this conversation will spin and spin and spin, because we have members who really do feel, and I don't think they're wrong or whatever, that, you know, there is censorship, or they're being silenced, or whatever. I think we should take that in consideration. That is their feeling, that is their thought, or whatever. We should make every effort and attempt to allow them to be heard. And I think that leaves a little bit of messiness, probably turns into like making sausage, but, I mean, in order to have a process, I think in some ways, we might not have to, or need a process, to just move forward, you know? So again, some things have been put out there, but we're going to be here all night long, just, you know, again, people reiterating the same thing, or whatever, as Dr. Campley has said numerous times already. So I think we need to just figure out a way to move forward with something that everyone can agree to. And I'm to the point where, if people want to ask questions, open-ended questions, a million questions, but again, as board members, we then have to be prepared for what comes out of that. Because again, I think the folks who are listening and looking at this, if they know that they're showing up, and it could turn into just 50 million questions about something that they said in a meeting, or a position they took, or something they put on Facebook or whatever, we might not get anybody. But, you know, if that's what people want to do, then that's what we do, or whatever. But again, I implore you, Ms. White, to just, yeah, try to bring this to some kind of end, if possible, tonight.
Okay, so, go ahead, Dr. Weston.
Just, you know, I agree with you, Mr. McKinney, about the difficulty in coming to consensus here. And in my previous experience with doing this on this board, it's never been this difficult. We've never had this level of conversation about the process for selecting a replacement board member. And I'm looking back over the things I've had experience with. Back in 2017, I was a member-elect to the board, I was only a witness to the process, but it was, the way, we started with eight candidates. If, as I'm reading through the minutes, each board member asked questions, there was a round of voting, four candidates were eliminated in that process, there was another round of questioning, it does not indicate whether it was standard questions, or if the board members, you know, were asking individual questions. But at that point, there was another round of voting, we were left with two candidates. There, you know, with two candidates, again, a round of questioning, didn't indicate whether it was, you know, the individual questions, free-form questions, but it got the impression that it was the same question for each candidate. There was still deadlock at the end, and then there was the withdrawal of the one candidate. And that's when Sarah Evans-Brockett came onto the board. February of 2018, we had another replacement to be made, five candidates, each board member asked a question of all the candidates answered, there was a round of voting, we were left with three candidates, asked questions that all the candidates answered, and at that point, there was a majority, that's when we got Dr. Kohler on the board. And then finally, on June 4th, 2018, we had two candidates, we had Matt Dorr and Kevin Sherman. Each board member asked a candidate one question prior to voting, that's when Matt Dorr became part of the board.
And Matt had been part of the process prior.
Matt had been part of the process prior.
Yeah, so those...
All of these, you know, in all of these cases, I think we got good members on the board, following the process that's laid out in the, basically in the proposed BOG, because that one actually goes back to like 2014, if I remember seeing in the library, that it's almost verbatim with the 2014 process, and the process that we followed is a process that we've been successful at. Previously, we haven't really found the need to ask extensive follow-up questions. If that's something that people want to do, for, if we don't get consensus, or if we don't get a majority in the first round of voting, I think it's not unreasonable to ask follow-up questions, but I think it would be, I'd like to see it as something that all of the candidates would address. But yeah, it doesn't have to be this difficult to come up with a process. And, you know, as far as it goes, consensus, in my mind, is a process that we can all agree to. That's the definition of consensus I've always worked with.
That was my feeling as well. That's right.
In the absence of consensus, if we're not able to come to consensus, then I think it's on the chairman to determine the process that we're going to be following. I think that would be then on you, Ms. White.
Well, and I would really prefer to come to consensus collectively, because I don't really think, you know, to Mr. Liggett's point, we're eight individuals, but we need to work as a team, as a whole, and that's where I think consensus becomes really important. And I think that in selecting an appointed individual, that should be something that we should be able to come to consensus on. And it's not a polarizing, it shouldn't be, a polarizing topic. And to Mr. Saylor's point about there was this, it was, you know, performative, and that there was a predetermined outcome that was going to happen in 2017, by asking a set of questions that are uniform, I was trying to eliminate the sense of that, and the circumstances around that appointment were much different. It was after the election, it wasn't done in the same forthright way that we have this timeframe prior to November to be able to accomplish this. And so it really should not, it should not be, the purpose of the discussion should be about how we want to approach it, and that should, we should be able to compromise around that. So I don't understand, I guess I just, I was ignorant to the dissent, honestly. And I really thought that we would be able to come to a collective agreement as to how we could approach the process of appointment. So, that being said, I heard this side of the table, Dr. Weston, Dr. Campley, and Mr. Fountain, say that they felt okay with the, they were comfortable with the list of questions. I understand that, Mr. McKinney, you're comfortable with the list of questions as presented. Is, do you want to take the approach of a majority rules as to what the approach is? Or do you, or do you want to come up with some sort of, like, as Mr. Schuber stated, there may be a first portion and a second portion of the process? I want to wrap this up, so there's an expectation as to how it's going to be. So folks that are looking to apply tomorrow, and in the next however long, we have to come up with a timeframe, they actually know what they're going to be getting into. That's my desire.
That requires the board to reach a consensus. It doesn't appear that that's going to happen this evening. And I think that preparing a proposed process plan, BOG, whatever you want to call it, and presenting that for a vote, and subject to my confirming the authority of a majority of the board to define that process, would be the way to move forward.
On Monday?
Yes.
Fine. Can we at least come to an understanding of how long the post should be open and up to receive applications?
Is it your intention... Is it your intention that we will have the interviews and vote?
On the 3rd.
At the November, rather than have a special session before then?
I would prefer not to have a special session. I did mention that we wanted to start, maybe it would start at 6 o'clock. So it would be special-ish to try to.
Yeah.
But again, with an open forum, I mean, we could start at 6 and still be done at midnight, I suppose.
I would say, you know, post the position as soon as possible and.
Tomorrow.
Leave it open till, what, end of next week?
One week.
Actually, what is today?
Yeah, it would give us two weeks and then that would give us plenty of time to.
Two weeks of collection.
And it would give us plenty of time to review all of the, you know, in the hopes, in the hopes that we actually get people to review all of the resumes and applications.
My thought would have been post on the 7th, 10 days the 17th, but I would, I could also, you know, agree to keep it open longer.
17th is a Friday, yeah.
17th is a Friday.
I mean, we could keep it open to the 24th, we still would have a week to review.
I think as long as we have a week to review, we're fine.
Okay.
Is there any objection to having it open for three weeks? Is there any objection to having the three questions posed as part of the posted submission with resume and cover letter?
Yes, I don't think you need someone's resume.
So there would just be then, the submission would require the application form, which is posted, approved 12-1-21, and it would include the applicant questionnaire dated October 2025. I'm happy to go over those questions since they'll be posted as part of the application.
So I actually disagree and I think a resume is applicable, I do think that it's something that we should request.
Okay. Could the resume be optional?
I think we should have background information on all of the candidates to know what their educational history is, what types of jobs they've held, just so we have an understanding of what background they're bringing to the board, knowing if they, maybe they held a job in financing, maybe they held a job in education, we won't know that unless, again, it's getting that extra information that Mr. Leggett was alluding to that would help us know more about each candidate.
Okay.
So I strongly believe.
So some of that's in the Board Operating Guideline document, and which we're not going to have confirmed until Monday, so then that means we wouldn't be able to post until next Tuesday.
Unless we can agree that a resume should be included in the application process.
I mean, by law, in order to apply to be a school board director at Perkerman Valley School District, you have to be a registered voter over the age of, well, a registered voter and lived in the school district for 357 days, I think, right? It's got to be one year plus one, or one year plus two, depending on when it is, that's it. You don't have to have a degree in finance, you don't have to have a PhD, you don't need to actually have a job, you could be retired, you could be right out of school, actually in Springfield, a student is currently running for a school board director, and there's two other students in Ohio running, so you could actually be a high school senior and apply for the position as well. They don't have a resume, and I don't want to infringe any.
They can turn in a resume.
Huh?
They could turn in a resume.
Yeah, I mean, the thing about it is, what's wrong with having as much information as possible about a person?
I mean, if we're talking about if we want information on the candidates, this is a perfect way for them to provide.
But in terms of a requirement, I guess, I guess that's the piece of it. So if, if people can send in, I mean, a slideshow, honestly, if their submission is, if their submission is their submission.
It can be optional.
But, but in terms of the requirement, there is this form.
No, optional's good, and if they choose not to turn one in, I guess that's telling as well.
And I don't, I don't like the new questions either, because I don't think the board's vetted those questions. How do you, how do your values align with the school district's mission? Their mission of the Perkerman Valley School District is to cultivate an inclusive community. What does that question mean for someone applying for a school director's position? That's not something we've asked in the past.
So the questions on the questionnaire that we had put to come back with the application were, in what ways do you believe your skills and experience would benefit the PBSD school board and the larger community? That is a resume type of question to kind of get at that response, Dr. Campley. The second one was, since this is a public school board serving the public schools, it was to see how their values align with the mission of the school district, which we state at the beginning of every single board meeting. And number three, what is your understanding of the expectations of a school board member? And so those questions are very broad and very open-ended and could come with a whole variety of responses. So I think in terms of getting a flavor of someone, these were really just, almost like conversation starters as a get-to-know-you. So if, there is no objection by the majority as to allowing for both of these things to be part of the posting process for the next three weeks, we can move on. Mr. Leggett, do you have any objection to any of those items?
No.
Mr. Keenan, do you have any objection to any of those items?
No, I don't have objection to those items, I, again, just like to be able to ask my questions.
Got it, for next week, we will nail it all down. Mr. McKinney, do you have objection for any of those items?
Nope.
I do not have objection for any of those items. Dr. Weston?
I have no objection to any of those items.
Dr. Campley?
No, no objection.
Mr. Fountain?
No objections.
Mr. Saylor?
No objections.
Wonderful, okay, so, those items will be posted with the solicitation of candidates to be part of Perkerman Valley School Board, for this seat right here, right here. We're not going to rearrange seats for this person, they're going to be right there and Dr. Sadler's going to leave them a note under the seat. Wonderful, resume is optional, whatever you'd like to provide. There was even a portion about references we had discussed, whatever you'd like. Don't even bring it up, okay. So, with that robust conversation, we are moving to, does anybody have anything else? Want to be fair. Got it, got it. Got it, got it? Got it, got it. Section 10, closing items. Comments from the audience, section 10.01, the board affords the public an opportunity to speak on any topic for three minutes. I open the floor, please state your name and municipality. Okay, seeing none. Comments from board members, I defer to you, Mr. Lees, first before we go around the table.
Thank you very much. I understand that my position is obviously a formal one but a minor one, and I want to say very consciously that I'm aware this position is used sparingly, not often, that's the way I have used it, but I believe it is important, especially considering, you know, what I think personally, but also what I believe in public, I know individual members of the public, my parents, adults I know, teachers in the school district who are members of the public, students who can vote. I feel that it's important that I state, because I feel like it did not come up enough, this is happening in lieu of an election because logistically, an election, a by-election to replace Dr. Sadler is logistically implausible. And with that, I'm going to say that I know people who would be disappointed if this process did not resemble that of a public election. And I feel that was not mentioned by anyone on the board, so I wanted to say that and speak to that. Because a process, the rubric has now been struck, but a process that is guided by rubric, a process where people cannot ask questions openly, I feel, and I feel I'm representing students among them, when I say that that is not representative of the process that should be had, a democratic process as close as we can get it for placing Dr. Sadler. And I feel it is, it would be a mistake and it would be wrong to not have this process resemble a democratic election where people can speak freely. So that is my comment, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lees. Anyone else at the table have anything to add?
Are we on board comments now, or are we just?
This is it, board comment, right here, 10.02.
Okay, well, I will be brief and I will say to my good friend, Dr. Sadler, you are the embodiment of collegiality, style, and grace, and leaving this board will damage that image. You are always positive, upbeat, considerate of your colleagues, you never get into the muck and the mire, and you're the only one who does that. And you leaving will leave an indelible dent in this board or whatever, but I wish you luck and I thank you for your service, I thank you for your friendship and your camaraderie on this board or wherever, it's been a wild ride and the only reason I'm here is because of you. But yes, so thank you and good luck and best wishes in all your future endeavors.
Thank you, Mr. McKinney, anyone else?
I can also say, I'm actually glad to see, I'm just glad to see people are here, I mean, like, we were looking at like an empty room for like a few.
I know, it was feeling a little sad.
Yeah, so, so, so thank you for coming out and definitely thank you for being here and putting in the time.
Tattering.
You know, so, so, yeah.
I earned just to rustle a cup of coffee.
So, yeah, so, yeah, I appreciate your time and your effort to be here.
All right, and with that, notice video disclaimer, 10.04 is adjournment, 11, executive session was held to discuss legal, and we will see everyone next week, thank you so much.[1790.83][1790.83]